All right, good morning, everybody. My computer says 9:00 a.m., so we're going to go ahead and get started. I want to welcome everybody to the special meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. It's a big day as we go through this really important process to select someone to represent the good citizens out in District C. In District C, so why don't we go ahead and begin with our roll call, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. President Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
I am here. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Here.
Trustee Nicolet.
I am present.
Trustee Thigpen.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And we're going to ask our associate Chief Legal Counsel to lead us in the pledge since you're here in the absence of Chief Legal. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wright. Okay, and a special welcome, of course, to all the finalists, the six finalists who are here. Thank you again for even going through this process. We know it isn't an easy thing to do, to go through a process such as this, period, and especially because it's so public. But we really, truly do appreciate all of your efforts and your work and your really your sacrifice and your putting yourself out there. We appreciate all the candidates, all 27 that we've had. But those of you who are here today as finalists, just a special word of appreciation to you. What I'd like to do is just go over just a little bit about how the process will work on today. The candidates all received an email on this yesterday, if not before. I don't remember which day, they kind of blend together. But this is really for the public that may be watching and those who may be here. Thank you for those of you who are here, members of the public as well, taking your time to come because it's a very important process, and we really do appreciate that. We also really appreciate all of the public comment or board emails that we've received. I've been, I was trying to catch up this morning, and I go, shoot, I gotta go get dressed. Just so much interest, which is a good thing, quite frankly, so much interest in the position and in those who will fill the position. And we're delighted that so much community interest is involved in this. So we don't want to be, we don't want to be remiss and miss the opportunity to thank those who have shared their thoughts, their concerns, their comments, their questions, all of that stuff, all of that stuff in this process. The way this process will work is that each of the six finalists will have an opportunity to address the board for, actually, not to address, that was last time. This time is the interview process. It's the interview process. And so we will go in a random order, which will be selected. The names are in a hat or some way that J.J.'s doing it. I think we had the scientific, very scientific cup selection process that we used last time. And we are going to use the very, very scientific cup selection process as well. And she always holds the cup up, so everyone knows it's very random because we want to make sure everyone has a fair opportunity in this process. And then what we have asked is for the other five finalists, excuse me, or four, three as we work down. If you have not had the opportunity to be interviewed as of yet, then we have a room we like, we're asking the other finalists to wait in if they would. We ask them to leave their electronic devices behind because this is a public process. And so certainly, you can certainly stand watch, but since that is not the desire of the board, we chose as a board that the question should just be before you when you're being interviewed. And so we're going to, we're asking the other applicants, the other finalists, to do just that. Again, and staff is prepared for that. Certainly, it's your choice because it is a public meeting. Although, if I may, I would strongly advise that you cooperate and participate in that manner because we think that's an important part of the process to give everyone, not give anyone an unfair, an unfair advantage. We certainly don't want to do that. Then, once you've been interviewed, however, you're certainly welcome to stay in the room if that's what you'd like to do because there's no advantage to be made one way or the other after your interview process. And so certainly, that's open to everyone as well. And then, once your name has been selected and you have an opportunity to come forward, there is a 30-minute window, a 30-minute window for your entire interview process. And this is how that will be divided up. You'll have an opportunity to have some opening comments. And then each of us as board members have identified questions, and then we'll ask those questions. And then, at the end, you'll have an opportunity for some closing remarks. But make sure you watch your time as well because it's only a 30-minute window. So we want to balance that as much as we can, to the extent that we can. We're not going to like cut you off kind of a thing, but just be mindful. I want you to have an opportunity to have your opening comments as well as your closing comments, each of you as applicants. And then, as a reminder, both Dr. Nicolet and myself, Trustee Nicolet and myself, have gone through this appointment process and have been appointed. So we certainly empathize, we understand, we know it's a difficult process, and want to do all that we can to make it as less nerve-wracking, I guess I should say, as it can be for each and every one of you. So that being said, I don't think I left, Chief Attorney Counsel?
Sounds good.
I don't think I left anything out. And so that's the process that we will begin. And so we will ask, at this point, we're going to ask, we're going, J.J., to call our first applicant in the very scientific cup selection process. Who's going to go first this morning?
Joe Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez, as you prepare to come forward, we're going to ask the other five finalists, if you would, please see our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, Ms. Anderson, there for the other finalist, if you would. Grab all of your belongings, and she'll have you in again. She'll, go ahead, turn your electronic devices off, if you will. And, or Ms. Anderson will collect those, either way. Again, we just want to make sure that, and Mr. Rodriguez, please, have a seat right there in the middle, sir. Yeah, yeah, it's 30 minutes, it's a long time. We don't want you to stand. I mean, you're likely you're in great physical condition, but nonetheless, we want you to be as comfortable as possible. Yes, there you go, grab your water, your notes, whatever you need. Okay? And then, just now, as before we begin, you'll be able to have a little bit of an advanced peek at the questions. Questions remain the same for all of the applicants. That does not prevent any board member, of course, from doing a follow-up, if that's appropriate, as long as it's in line with the questions that we have. The questions have been approved by H.R. to make sure that we follow all the rules and all of those things as well. And we're going to ask, thank you very much for the door to be closed, if we would, if you wouldn't mind closing that door. And then, if others, other members of the public come in, absolutely, we'll make sure and welcome them in, invite them in. It's certainly still an open meeting, but we want to create the best environment that we can for our applicants because, again, we know this is a, it's a bit of a challenge. It's a bit of a challenge. Okay, that being said, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you again. Thank you for throwing your hat in the ring and being a part of this process. We know it's difficult, as I've said before. But just before we start, we're going to just give you a moment to just go ahead and take a look at those questions. Just a reminder, if everyone would, please silence your cell phones, if you would. Turn them down. Certainly, I'm going to ask you to turn them off. We know they're so much a part of our lives, but if you wouldn't mind silencing those cell phones so that we don't have an interruption of the applicants, we'd appreciate that for everyone. All right, Mr. Rodriguez, we're going to jump on in?
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to jump in, and we have the questions ahead, and we just go by district this time. So that means District A, Trustee Jeffrey Church, you are first, sir.
President Taylor, did you want to allow time for an opening comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the reminder. I was right, let's get right to it. No, thank you very much. Mr. Rodriguez, thank you very much, sir. You have your time, and we'll just start your 30 minutes. You'll see it ahead of you. Please, go ahead and start.
Well, first, I want to thank you all for giving me the honor and privilege to be here. Regardless of what happens today, I am very humbled to even be, to even make it this far. And I have no doubt you all do have a tough decision ahead of you. And honestly, I want to save most of my time for my closing remarks. So, again, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And thank you, thank you for that, J.J. Trustee Church, sir?
Public comment on this agenda item comes at the end?
Yes.
Okay. All right, my question is, how can the Washoe County School District improve the quality of education in the Washoe County School District?
I'm sure there's some room for improvement. I am actually really happy to see the teacher, student-to-teacher ratio here in Washoe County actually is better than the state average of 22 to 1. Ways that we can improve education is basically seeing what small gaps are we missing. And I think that goes to listening to parents and teachers, seeing what is missing or what is the sense is of what constituents are out there saying. Basically, ways to improve, I mean, aside with the pandemic, I think we're doing a pretty good job, and I think just looking at what gaps that there needs to be filled. I think some of the gaps I do see, especially some things such as making there more of a suicide awareness with kids today and tolerance, honestly. I think they're the only gaps that I can really be seeing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. We're going to go to District B. Clerk Menel, thank you, Trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. So, welcome. And sit, I'm over here a few.
Yes, ma'am.
It's hard to tell, I know. Since we were required by law to teach social justice, in your opinion, what should that look like?
I think that does kind of go back to teaching of tolerance. Again, this is a law. I know it's a hot topic, but it's a law, and it's our job to follow the law, not interpret it. So this goes to teaching of tolerance of one another regardless of race, sexual orientation, I mean, basically, all protected classes. So if we're required by law to teach that, let's teach it. So that means, as Americans, owning our successes as well as our failures. So if there's something that we need to be teaching, we need to be teaching it. This is a law.
Thank you, Clerk Menel. We're going to go to District D, since this is a seat for District C. District D, Trustee Thigpen?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Rodriguez, how will you work to ensure a safe, positive, accepting, and welcoming environment for all students, including but not limited to the LGBTQ+ and BIPOC youth and staff?
Well, again, these are classes that are protected under law already. I'll be honest with you, again, this going into bullying goes into tolerance. How to ensure their safety, that comes upon us, that comes upon talking to staff, administrators. How do we protect these kids? I'm not going to sit here and pretend I have all the answers, but this sounds like a great topic. I love to have discussion with all of you. How do we do this? Promoting awareness, again, working with the school police, working with teachers. But I do believe that they have the right to have a safe classroom. So regardless of what the race and sexual orientation may be, or what they identify themselves, they have a legal right to have a safe classroom. So.
Thank you, Trustee Thigpen. We're going, Trustee Calvert, District S.
Good morning and welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
In your experience, what have you done that shows you are willing to listen to different views when coming up with your decision?
I think that comes from, you guys have my application and everything. Basically, since the age of 14, I've been volunteering and been involved in the community one way or another. In my adult life, working in public service, I've, you know, I've listened to the boards I've sat on. So I kind of wrote that into my final comments, that I like to think that I've fine-tuned the ability to negotiate, to listen, to compromise, and to stand up. Yeah, I like to think I've really fine-tuned that, you know. I know I look older than I am, I'm under 40, but I like to think that I've lived the life of showing compromise. I've been married for 10 years, so if that doesn't show compromise, I don't know what does. But, you know, so, in all honesty, just, I've listened, worked in patrol, worked in the military, been in foreign countries, learning to be cognizant of other cultures and things like that. Even in the military, we compromised in whatever land that we were in. Same goes into this and to here. I like to think that, if I'm sitting amongst you guys, I'm not here to fight against anyone. We're here, we have a mission, let's work together and compete our objective. And I like to think that the last 20 years, I've been doing that just fine.
Mr. Rodriguez, I'm going to just do a little follow-up to, Trustee Calvert, for me, to that, what are the keys to being able to do that, in your opinion, in your experience? You listed several opportunities you've had, patrol, military overseas, and so on.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, you varied experience. What are the keys to that?
You know, if I could put it in a book, I would love to sell it. It's just something I know that, depending on the situation, depending on what situation I am in, dictates on, okay, what's the outcome? If I'm even talking about working as a board, I know social justice, these things are a very hot topic, but bottom line, it's the law. So we've got to teach this. You know, I know it's going to be, what does that curriculum dictate? It's going to, that's up to us and administrations that be to dictate what that is. But it's a law, and until that changes, it is what it is. So I know that's that outcome. But just realizing, you got, you know, to be here on the board, you got to represent the people in the best way possible. But if the law's a law, or if there's an objective, we got to work together to compromise to close something, then that's what we got to do.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you, Trustee Calvert.
Mr. Rodriguez, so what do you do in cases where you're not able to compromise? Say, I have one opinion, you have another, so what do you do to gain agreement?
So, I mean, honestly, I like to think that we'll be respectful of one another to trade ideas, and sometimes giving in, knowing when to call a quiz. If we're not going to reach an agreement, then to tell you what the topic might be, if we could come to some sort of compromise, okay, I'll give in 70%, you know, I'll give in 70%. Can I have this 30% because I know this is what the constituents are going to want? Just knowing when to stand and when to compromise, it's an art. But, you know, it's, I hope that you and I will both have the same objective of what's best for the kids, the teachers, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Calvert. District D, that's me, it's my turn. As a body, the board, as a body charged with the leadership of the district, the board currently has some leadership strengths, and we also recognize that we have some gaps. Please share your opinion on the leadership gaps that you see and how you could help fill them.
Well, I did know, you said it last week, this is a pretty young board, and I get that. But I do see great amount of leadership and diversity here. So gaps, I think the only, you know, the biggest gap is maybe, okay, yeah, it's a young board. But I see outstanding leadership from all sorts of walks of life. What gaps can I help bring in? Well, I like to think that, you know, I bring years of community service and passion. I think we all have that passion, but that's something else I could bring and help strengthen is passion that I want to be here. I've been volunteering on different boards before. I get that, and I love the community. I love Washoe County, and I think there's no other board to be on than helping the future of the students and the future of residents of Washoe County. So what strengths do I bring? I like to think that I bring that compromise, that leadership, that ability to work together, that teamwork. I've, you know, I keep chiming on this, but I've been doing it for a long, long, long time.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Okay, next, we'll go to Dr. Nicolet, District G. Oh, I'm, yeah, 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 there you go.
District G, gigantic. Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, how do you think Washoe County School District Board policy informs the trustees' work?
Well, I believe that goes into being having transparency. I'll be honest, I want to something just a little bit.
It's okay, take your time, please.
I can kind of elaborate on that one a little bit, so I will give you a proper answer. Can you elaborate on that just a little bit?
I think I could do this. Washoe County School District trustees have extensive policies throughout the operations of the school district. And we are continually reviewing them, revising them. And so as far as, I guess, the question, why would we even bother with policy? How does it inform our work? How does it guide us?
Oh, okay. Well, I know in my line of work and going back, policy is everything, so that's something that we all collectively agree on. We all agree going forward, so whoever replaces us, obviously, we need policy to kind of help dictate and guide in what our intentions are. So, I mean, I know I work in policies right now, you know, if something happens, this is what, how we respond, this is how we react, if there's something that occurs, how to follow through on the, you know, on the after-action review side of it. So I do believe that, you know, policies, I mean, that's what governs us moving forward. So.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We have gotten through our questions, Mr. Rodriguez, so it's an opportunity for you to have whatever closing remarks you might want to share with the board and so on.
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And here I was, I was worried I wouldn't have enough time for my final words. So I do want to kind of start saying that I'm not going to pretend that I'm going to sit here and have all the answers for everything. I know there's a lot of tough, hot topics going on going forward, and I'm still trying to better myself on what stance, on where things are. But given my line of work, I do believe the law is the law. And that's not our job to interpret it, so until state legislators or Supreme Court changes it, it is what it is. But in closing, again, I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be here. And you guys must have saw something in me, so I do appreciate that. So in my final words, I do want to kind of bring a little bit more on what my strengths are because I know I'm going against some really hard competition. So, Trustee Church, you mentioned last week that you saw diversity in me, and I like to thank you for that. And I like to think you're right in many ways. My education is different from all of yours. Military service, my career, I do have four out of three kids, or, sorry, three out of four kids in Washoe County schools. President Taylor, you mentioned that the board needs someone that doesn't think alike but can work together. I hear you on that. And I like to think that I bring that ability to work together. There's times I make decisions I'm not happy with, but there's other times that I do feel like, you know, it's a win for all of us. In my 20 years in my volunteer service, it's evidence that shows that. The ability to negotiate, reason, compromise, and when to stand for the people. I may not have a doctorate or a PhD, but I'm an expert in my field, and the two degrees I do have, I worked really hard doing. I worked really hard while completing my military obligation, working full-time, being a husband and a father, and a very blended family. I may not be Spanish-speaking, but I do, doesn't mean I don't appreciate or embrace my culture or my heritage. I remember visiting my grandfather in Mexico, and I know if he was still here today, he'd be proud to see me sitting here before you all. I'm definitely not a career politician, but I do bring 20 years of civic service. I may not be a big CEO, but I'm a public servant. I chose to work for the state of Nevada because I wanted to serve the Valdians, all of them, rural and metropolitan. As you all know, Washoe County is booming. We all know that. You can't go 5A Southbound, the bowl, and not see continuous endless miles of construction. Somerset, south, the money ranch, North Valleys, Spanish Springs, we're growing. We're going to need schools, we're going to need educators. I'm a big supporter of that. I really, really support building more and more schools. You might even wonder what some of my topics would be if I'm allowed to sit on this board. I have four that are really important to me, safe schools. I love the idea of having two officers in every school. They're the face of all, first and for the kids today, which will impact these kids growing into adults and entering the workforce. Teachers, I mean, talk about troops on the front line right there. I love the idea of being able to give them more competitive wages. And I believe that trying to recruit the best teachers as possible, we as a board, as a society, really, offer that, deserve to give that to our kids. Tolerance, I kind of touched on this a little bit earlier. I know this can be kind of a hot topic. But I do support not just teaching math and science, but giving the kids the tools, the ability to, when they do enter into the world, whether that's college, trades, the military, or the workforce, that they have some basis of understanding of tolerance of one another. And that doesn't have to be super political, that's just being a person, a human being. So that means embracing our successes on our failures as well. Suicide awareness, bully awareness, is something that's a really hot topic to me, or a very important topic to me. Suicide is number one leading cause of death for all the Valdians ages 12 to 19, and second leading from 20 to 44, some of you all may know that. Number one, number one, leading cause of death from 12 to 19. That's something that our parents teach, parents trust us with their children Monday through Friday. So when our parents are at work or asleep working graveyard, they trust us with their kids. And so we need to have the ability to be able to recognize and help teach kids to recognize these type of things. And educators more over than anything. So I do want to promise one thing to the people of District C. If I'm appointed today, the very first thing I want to do is within three weeks is have meet and greets. I know there's a lot of things going on, there's a lot of topics going on, and this is a very interesting, unique, unprecedented time we're coming out of. And I do believe, from a little bit I've been looking, there's a lot of people in District C that have a lot to say. So I do promise that if appointed, I will meet with, have my door open to them. Finally, I know if also appointed today, this is the best part about being elected, even if I'm appointed today, I still got to look at running for election coming here pretty soon. And regardless of what happens, I've already began preparations to start running. And I do have family that are Spanish-speaking that is more than willing, actually eager to help me reach the Spanish community. That's the second largest race here in Washoe County. So with that being said, I know I've got almost 12 minutes left, and I want to thank you all for your time. And again, I really, really appreciate having the ability to be here, one of your finalists.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rodriguez. And it's okay if you're done, we have time. It doesn't matter about that at all. It matters that you had the opportunity to answer our questions from the board that we had a chance to ask, and then you had a chance to give your remarks. So again, we appreciate your being here, throwing your hat in the ring, and really putting yourself into this process. It means a great deal, and we appreciate it, and I'm sure the citizens in District C appreciate it as well, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, we have a couple of minutes. If anyone need a quick break, or do we just want to just go, we're good? I know we just started, so we're good, okay? We'll go to the next applicant.
Verita Black Prowthrow.
Well, need to take a couple minutes for staff to get Ms. Black Prowthrow. Well, you need to take a couple of minutes for staff to get Ms. Black Prothrow. Welcome, Ms. Black Prothrow, we'll have you right here in the middle. Okay, just before we begin, we'll give you, we'll give you a couple of minutes, probably minutes, so just look at the questions. The questions we're going to ask you are right there, taped to the table.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, the tapes. So you go ahead and take a moment, and you can review those.
Okay.
As you dig through your glasses, just a reminder for how the process will work, and then once there, we'll give you, give you an opportunity, right? To have opening remarks. The entire process will take 30 minutes, and JJ will have that on us already up there. And then we'll ask our questions, each East trustee has identified a question. Trustees are certainly able to do a follow-up question, if anybody has one. And then when we get to the end, you'll have an opportunity for closing remarks. The entire piece, though, should take 30 minutes, so you want to be mindful of your time. And then again, just before we jump in, just thank you again for throwing your hat in the ring and being a part of this kind of unique, very public process.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead and take a moment to review, and then we'll begin with your opening remarks.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and get going? Do you have a chance to get through? Okay, great. So we'll start with your opening remarks, and then we'll, trustees will go around just as we did before in order of our district. And I'll actually jump in at the right place this time. Please go ahead, opening remarks.
Thank you for the opportunity, and one of the things that I wanted to really talk about this week, because I felt that it didn't come across last time, was the work that I'd done with conservative Republicans, that I worked for conservative Republicans as their director of their office for about a decade. And doing that, because I have very different views, was very interesting. And part of the reason that Senator Ensign brought me in was that he wanted to hear dissenting voice, voices. And so he hired quite a few Democrats to work in his office, because his feeling was that he wasn't just the senator for Republicans in Nevada, that he was the senator for everyone. So during that time, I had an opportunity to see that when you listen to voices that are different than your own, and you bring all of that together, you get a very good, robust product that is effective in helping more people in impacting their lives in a more positive way. And I think now we're in a, this point where people don't think that people should disagree about anything. And if you disagree, then they don't want to be your friend anymore, or, you know, they want to take their ball and go home. We should be able to talk, we should be able to disagree and come together and talk about what is best for everyone. Can we take a little bit of this and a little bit of that and make something that is a better product and that will help more people? So I really wanted to stress that, because, you know, I have strong views, but I'm also very fair. I like to make informed decisions, I like to look at data, I like to look at best practices in forming my decisions. And that's just really important, and it's amazing, some of the things that we were able to do in that office, because we would come together and talk it out, and a little compromise here, compromise there. I'm very proud of the work that we were able to do when I worked in both of those offices. So I think that's probably the most important thing that I wanted to talk about this morning. The other thing is the idea of leadership. I kept thinking about leadership, and this is definitely a leadership position in the community. And for me, leadership is having an idea, being passionate about that idea, and then getting other people to come along and want to be a part of it, to see that vision, that you're so excited about the vision, passionate about the vision, that other people want to take their time and their talents to be a part of that. And when you do that, you can create a sense of excitement that changes things. And that's what we want to do, we want to change things for the better, for the kids and for the community. When I was growing up, I attended a little Baptist church, and the leaders in the church were, you know, the pastor and all that, but the real leaders in the church were those old women who, if they wanted something done, if they wanted a children's library in the, for Sunday School, or if they wanted new choir robes, they would get the church so excited that people were cooking dinners and selling them, and pies and bake sales and all this. And it became just a whole project, a whole church project. But those women, they knew how to inspire, and they would have people see the vision of we're going to have this library, and kids are going to be able to come and get books on Christian education, or they'll be able to take books home and keep them. We're going to do this, and nobody else has this, we're going to be the first one in this community with that. And people would get so excited, that's leadership, because they worked hard on those projects. So from a little person, I was able to see that that's how you get stuff done. You don't just go in and tell people, we're going to do it this way, and it's going to be that way, ever else. That's not the way you get things done. You come together, you let, you help, they help you develop the vision to make it better, and then everybody gets excited about carrying it forward. So I wanted to just talk about, so you would know what my feelings are about leadership and what that looks like to me. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Black Prothrow, we're going to start with trustee Church, District A, your question, sir?
Thank you. How can the Washoe County School District improve the quality of education in the Washoe County School District?
Well, the district gets a lot of things right. I wanted to first stress that. I think in order to improve the quality of education here, we have to really work with the superintendent, to work with the teachers, to see what they feel they need. Oftentimes, my teachers, my friends who are teachers say that they don't really feel heard. Or they might say something, and it stops with the principal, and they don't feel like it goes to the next level. So I think if there's a way to communicate better with the teaching staff, that would definitely be a good starting point for improving education in Washoe County.
Good trustee Church? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to District B, Clerk Manetto.
Welcome. So since we're required by law to teach social justice, in your opinion, what should that look like?
You know, that's kind of a complicated issue. How do you do it? You're going to have one faction that feels like, you know, no, we don't want our kids to know about this or that. And then maybe one faction that says, we want them to know everything, that's, we want to develop this, them to be empathetic. And in the middle of all of that, I think that you have to be honest about what has happened in the country for all populations. And that means that we have to talk about some things that are uncomfortable. We have to talk about the transatlantic slave trade, and we have to talk about Betrayal of Tears, and we have to talk about Jim Crow, and we have to talk about Japanese internment, and we have to talk about Hispanic farm workers, and Caesar Chavez and that whole movement, so that we get a clear view of what has happened and what has made this country great, but also some of the things that haven't, that have been kind of ugly. And to know that we have done some things in the past that were wrong, but we have to learn from that and move forward, so that we can get justice for everyone. And I think that's the only way that it can happen, is for, to have a strong history program in order to have kids understand our society, that there has been injustice, and how do we move forward from that together? And, you know, I'm a part of a group now of ministers, law enforcement, theologians, and we're all over the country. And we're talking about racism and social injustice, and what the church can do to alleviate it. We have a big vision, we just want it gone. And part of that is talking about some of the things that are so hard to talk about. And in order to do that, your teachers have to be trained properly, so that they know what to say, and they're not in a place where they feel uncomfortable giving the information, but also giving them that vision that we can move forward from this. And it makes us all, it makes it richer when we all understand what has happened. Not to make anybody feel guilty, but how we can learn from the past and move forward, and so we can have social justice for everyone.
Clerk Manetto, you're good? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go on to, go over to District D, trustee Finkpin.
Thank you for being here. How will you work to ensure a safe, positive, accepting, and welcoming environment for all of our students, including but not limited to LGBTQ+ and BIPOC youth and our staff?
Again, education. We have to start with our teachers, so that they foster an environment that is welcoming in the classroom. And depending on how people were raised, that might be more difficult for some than others. So we, I would think, we need to have a really strong program for teachers to teach them to be welcoming in the classroom, and to stop any language or any language that isn't welcoming in the classroom. For instance, my son said that there was a, my son's 12, and he's at, God, I can't think of their school. Anyway, he's there, and he said that one of the girls in the classroom has two mothers. And the kids were just, some of the kids were just really going in on her and teasing her because she has two mothers. The teacher jumped right in and said, we will not have that, you know, that's not cool. We're not going to tease someone if they have two mothers or two fathers, or no mother or no father, we're just not going to go there in my classroom. That is not okay. And he said, she really, she let them have it, that it wasn't okay. And if the teachers don't do that, then I don't know that the kids will. But later, my son told me that the kids who were in the classroom also went to the ones who were teasing the girl about having two moms, and they went back at her again and said, you know what, that's just really not cool. So I think if, the kids know, but I think the adults are the ones that are going to need to reinforce that anything that is not welcoming, and I don't like to use the word tolerant, because I don't want to be tolerated. That sounds so horrible, I want to be welcomed, I want to be included. I want it to feel safe. And the teacher is the person in that classroom that can make sure that happens. So we have to make sure that they are trained properly to be able to do that.
You good, trustee Finkpin? Okay, thank you very much, is my question District E? As the board, the board, we are the body that's charged with the leadership of the district. The board currently has some leadership strengths and also some leadership gaps. Could you please share your opinion on the leadership gaps and how you could help to fill them?
I think one of the gaps that I see as a parent in the district is that I don't think the board or the district has a strong enough program in talking about what goes right. We hear what goes wrong, sometimes there are different people who are out saying, oh, this is, the district's awful, and the graduation rates, this or, it's horrible. And from someone whose son spent several years, four of his first years in school, in a private school, and now he's in public school, the district just isn't telling a story. I mean, I've seen wonderful success with him as a student, that I would have thought I would have seen in a private school. I didn't see it there, but when he got into public school, I saw it, and how concerned the teachers were. And if they would call me in and say, let's try this, or, he's not the easiest student, he's just not the easiest kid in the world. So, kid, let's try this, and if you'll try a little bit more of this, then we'll try a little bit more of that. I don't hear that when people talk about the district, the wonderful things that are going on. I think that's a huge gap. The other thing that I think would strengthen the community and the district's perception in the community is to have more buy-in from the parents. I have a bumper sticker that says, I support Washoe County School District. Have that, can you imagine if you see that all day long on the road? And people are seeing that they support, there are people who support the school district, and that maybe the- And that maybe the kids have a podcast where they talk about the good things that are happening. You know, we hear about the bad things. We don't hear about the good stuff. We need to hear more about what is going right. The kids... and I know this just from having a child in the district and how often you'll hear that there's a big race problem in Washoe County, in the school district. And my son says, "Well, I don't think so." He said, "We all go on together." I ask him. And my son is adopted. He's mixed race. He's very fair. So he can kind of blend anywhere. And he thinks that kids have a way of just kind of getting along and doing things and coming up with little projects together, but we're not hearing about that. I think we need to get down to that level where if the kids have a project, there's a way to let people know about that. They need to know the good things, the things that are working, the teachers that are working overtime. The ones... my son's teachers are saints because they really have to work overtime because he's the class clown and, you know, he does all this. And they just work with him. They work with me. They call me if there's a problem. We don't hear enough about that. And I think that is one of the biggest gaps, is communication. And not that the communications team here doesn't do a good job. I just think they need to do a different job. I think there are some things that need to be added. And I have a background in PR, so I can look at some of those gaps and see ways that it could be filled with telling the story, talking about those teachers that work tirelessly and they go above and beyond. Because I know that to be true.
Thank you, Ms. Blackprouther. We're gonna move on to District F, trustee Calver.
Good morning. In your experience, what have you done that shows you are willing to listen to different views when coming up with your decision?
Again, thank you for that. I would point back to my time where I worked with conservative Republicans. And we had to come up with solutions. It wasn't a time where we could say, you know, "We're gonna kick this can down the road." Some of our most difficult issues where we had angry people, upset people, were, one, talking about water issues in the West and how... You'd hear, you know, one side, and whether you agreed with it or not, they had valid points. And again, on the other side, whether they had... they had valid points as well. And you have to take a little of this and a little of that and try to come up with the best solution that helps the most people. But you have to be able to listen to angry people, to people who have been denied. They've gotten denial letters and hung up on, and they've spent hours on the phone with federal agencies. And when they get to us, even if we don't quite understand or agree with what they need, we need to listen and see if we can come up with a solution that will work for them. And sometimes that doesn't happen. But if people know that you've listened, that makes a huge difference. It just makes a huge difference because so many people aren't heard. And when it comes to the school district, I would think that you have a lot of parents who didn't do well in school. They probably weren't your best students. And just the idea of having to have an encounter at a school or at the school district is off-putting to them because they go back to that fourth-grade teacher that embarrassed them or, you know, some bad experience on the playground, and that all bubbles up. Well, we need to get past the anger of all that and get to, "What is it that you really want us to know? How can we really help? What are your thoughts? What can we... what can we... what do you think that we can do?" And then go from there. Again, we're not gonna make everybody happy. It doesn't work that way. But if people know that they've been heard, that helps an awful lot.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blackprouther. Trustee Nicolette, District G.
Thank you. Welcome. And I truly, I know we all do appreciate you taking the time. And it seems like you're having fun. You go.
Actually, I am.
Good. All right. How do you think Washoe County School District Board policy informs the work of the trustees?
Well, it's a blueprint on how to work together, how to work with the superintendent. And if you follow that and, you know, you're not trying to do the superintendent's job and you allow her to do her work after she's listened to your vision and seen what's important to the board, then it should be seamless. Unfortunately, things don't always work that way. And if there are differences in the board and you're not giving her clear direction, then that would be... that would cause problems. And I think in the past, some of the things from someone in the community is that maybe the board wasn't as clear on what they wanted the superintendent to carry forward or do. Or maybe the board itself wasn't on the same sheet of paper. And so they couldn't give the superintendent a clear vision of what they wanted to move forward. And then you just see problems. The teachers aren't happy, perhaps other staff aren't happy, and then the kids aren't happy. And you can... and it trickles down. The work of the board is so important. But you all really need to be a united force. Doesn't mean you have to all agree, but you need to have each other's back, especially when you go into a public forum. You need to have... you need to, you know, clarify that vision, clarify that work, and give her clear direction on what it is that you want her to move forward on. And so that the superintendent knows that you have her back too. Because it looks really bad if the board is saying negative things about the superintendent. It just looks bad in the community. And that, I think, is another gap. We have to make sure that we... that the superintendent knows that she is supported.
Ms. Nicolette, that was your question? You're good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. No follows from anyone? Okay, that was our last question for you, Ms. Blackprouther. So now you have an opportunity to give us any closing remarks that you have. You have about three and a half minutes left, so you can use that time any way you want to, but it's your opportunity to give us any closing remarks.
Okay. I took a few notes. Is it okay if I ask you all questions during my time?
I don't think we've ever... we haven't really allowed... we didn't have that discussion. But I don't think we've... we haven't allowed anyone... no one else has asked, but...
It's just process timeline.
Okay, if it's just process timeline questions, I think that will be appropriate. I'm getting from counsel. I think anything outside of that might be outside of kind of the scope of what we've extended to everyone else.
Okay. Well, my question would be actually the question that you posed to me about gaps. What do you all feel are...
Yes, and I think that's the question we couldn't answer. Excuse me, I think the question left would be just about process timeline and what's going on here. Because we didn't share with everyone that... and then during your remarks, you have a chance to ask us questions. We didn't extend that. So we certainly want to be consistent. That's what I'm getting from counsel, and that certainly seems to make sense.
Okay, that's fair. Okay. And yes, I am having fun. Instead, I'm enjoying the process. I can see... I love Reno. I really do. I was born and raised here. My son was born here. And it is just an amazing community with amazing people. And there are so many stories here. You know, my dad moved here in the 1940s, and it was a very different Reno. It was very segregated, and a lot of people don't realize that Reno was very segregated at one time. And he came here for a better life. And he got it. He got a much better life. I look at my relatives that remained in Panola County, Texas, and their life isn't so great. And so he came here with a vision of a life that could be better. I would come to this board with a vision of this school district being better, of telling its stories, of being super supportive of the superintendent and the teachers who work so hard. I really didn't realize how hard teachers worked until the pandemic. And I was trying to teach my son at school. I was like, "Oh, Lord, I would give my... I'd give my... I'd give his teacher my house if I could. She can just have my house. She can have my car, whatever she wants." Because this is hard work. And getting a kid like my son to pay attention and learn is an absolute gift from God. And we need to treat it as such. Because, you know, he struggles. And to have someone who can light up this kid wanting to learn and getting excited about new ideas and new ways of doing things. And to see that someone is so gifted that they can pull that out of him is amazing to me. And I want to be a part of a district.
I think our time is up. We're counting up now? JJ, okay, I didn't hear a buzz. Our time is up now, so... So we need to just thank you.
Okay.
Right, for being here and for taking the time. I know we kind of caught you off mid-sentence, but I didn't hear a buzz, and I looked up and was like, "Well, I think we're going the other way now." So, yeah, so thank you. And I understand we don't want to start those people. But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For being here, for taking the time. We have four more interviews. As you know, you're certainly invited. You can stay here for the rest if you like, and then we'll deliberate you to how the process will go.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Your glass, you got it.
I'm sorry, you want... Oh, okay, you want to take a look? Okay.
Sean McCaffrey.
I'm sorry, JJ, I'll pay more attention to make sure I don't... I love that, but... No, your timing's perfect. We just... I was just gonna get a couple seconds. Welcome, Mr. McCaffrey. Thank you for being here, sir.
Good morning. Thanks for having me.
Good morning. We're gonna just quick review. You see the questions there before you?
Great, thank you.
We're gonna give you an opportunity to review those as well. And then what we will do is, well, as I said before, you'll have an opportunity for opening remarks. And then each of the trustees have questions. We'll just go by district, stay in the same order to keep things consistent. We'll ask questions, and any trustee has an opportunity to ask a follow-up on their question or another. We haven't had a bunch of that, but just so you know, that may occur. And then at the end, you'll have an opportunity for closing remarks.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, and we have 30 minutes for that whole piece.
Okay.
Just as a reminder. So why don't you just take a moment or two? I know you're kind of looking down. Go ahead and take a moment or two, make sure you're good with the questions and at least in terms of understanding, and we'll jump in.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all set, Mr. McCaffrey?
I think so.
Okay, just again, right before we jump in, again, just again, I want to just continue to express our appreciation for you jumping into this strange process. Right? But we really appreciate it, so thank you so much.
No, thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Opening comments, sure. Hopefully more succinct than I was last Tuesday. First and foremost, good to know you probably don't know about me. I'm born and raised in this community, product of McQueen High School. And like you, President Taylor was among the first in my family to go to higher education. The very first was my cousin, who actually spent the last 26 years serving the school district as a special education teacher who I admired greatly. But after that, going to UNR, and I was a cheerleader at UNR, where I actually met my wife, just celebrated her 28th anniversary of our first date two days ago. And we have a 14-year-old at home who's an incoming freshman at Spanish Springs High School. What I hope I made clear last week is that I do... I am committed to education. And I hope that was made clear last week. And I also understand District C through my accomplishments for the alliance. I understand the nuance of District C very, very clearly. And also being a proud parent, you know, I could bring that perspective to this board. I think currently there's a gap. I could talk about that later in our interview. I think currently is, there's a gap, I could talk about that later in our interview. But the last thing is, is this is a big job, you know, I was very concerned about the scope of work. So I met with EC before he left, I'm sure a lot of candidates did, just to get a better understanding about what this job really entailed, how much time was involved, and the challenges, and I really appreciated his candor. We spent three hours at lunch, and he was very candid about the challenges and the time commitment, and that just galvanized my resolve, because I know there's a lot of big decisions coming down the pipe with this, with this board over the coming months, and the last 18, 2 months have been very, very difficult for families, I went through that personally. So I'm looking forward to hopefully have an opportunity to build on what Andrew did in terms of his commitment to constituent responsiveness, his commitment to being doggedly prepared for every board meeting, and building on the, building on the, you know, just his approach to be, being on this board. So I hope to have the opportunity to succeed him and follow that tradition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey, we're just gonna go in order of district, as we've been doing to make sure we're consistent, we're gonna start with District A, Trustee Church.
Thank you. How can the Washoe County School District improve the quality of education in the Washoe County School District?
Great question, thank you. You know, those last 18 months have been, or 15 months have been a challenge, you know, going through, and especially with regard to middle school and high school kids, the hybrid model, some families have thrived in this environment, others haven't. I know personally, my family, my son has struggled mightily in this hybrid environment, and I believe that a lot of these kids have lost their gear in terms of not only getting half the education, you know, going to school every other day, and not by the fault of any teacher, it's just the reality of the environment for the last 15 months. And so I really believe that we're gonna have to put some more rigor and, and help with the adjustment as these kids adjust to going back to school full-time is gonna be a challenge for them. And I'm sure that the teachers are already thinking about how to best to do that, and I'm sure the administration's thinking about how best to do that. But addressing that gap as we get these kids back into the school, back into school come August, I think this will be a big challenge for us, and putting a lot of emphasis on that, I think is how we address the quality to start with, to make up for the loss time we just experienced.
As a follow-up to that, let's pretend COVID never happened.
Mm-hmm.
How do we improve, or are we doing okay, on the quality of education?
You know, there's always room for improvement, you know, I, it really is unfortunate how so many people are railing against, they bring in the state statistics, and they lump Washington into the state statistics in terms of how poor we are in Nevada, when Washington's definitely not true, and I can attest to that. But in terms of quality of education, I believe in college and career readiness, and making sure that we're aligned with the needs of the workforce, making sure that we're aligned with the needs of higher education, are we, making sure that our kids are properly prepared. And so looking at how we can do a better job in making sure these kids are ready for grade 13 is where I would focus my, my, I would, well, I would focus our attention.
Thank you, so Trustee Church, you're good. Okay, Trustee Minneto, District B, Clerk Minneto.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Since we are required by law to teach social justice, in your opinion, what should that look like?
Whew, that's a pretty meaty topic right now, isn't it? It's interesting, I know that is part of the state requirement, and I haven't looked at all the different options available to us as a, as a school district across the country, but I know that, I would like to think that we would not want to do anything that is divisive. I know there's a lot of discussion around CRT, and whether we create a task force, I say we, as a community, is a task force created to look into that, and I would trust the task force will look at that pretty clearly and identify how we can meet the needs of the state while not being divisive or creating any type of controversy within the, within the community. But to answer your question, I've not seen all the different options available to us, and without, so I'm not as informed in terms of what that would look like, because I know that these curriculums we pay for by third-party organizations and entities, but I would just hope that whatever we decide, whatever the decision is for social justice curriculum, that it meets the needs without, you know, while tiptoeing very lightly on not being as controversial to create mistrust with the community.
Okay, thank you, thank you very, thank you very much, we're gonna go on to District D.
Okay.
Trustee, take it.
Thank you for being here, Mr. McCaffrey, I appreciate you sharing your anecdote about your three-hour meeting with Andrew, it seems like anytime I met with him, it was about that time as well, we always had a lot to talk about.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm gonna miss working with him. How will you work to ensure a safe, positive, accepting, and welcoming environment for all of our students, including but not limited to our LGBTQ plus and BIPOC youth and staff?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, I remember being a middle school and high school kid, and it's an awkward stage, we're trying to find our way, we're trying to find our path, trying to find our peer group, and it can be very confusing, especially if you feel like you're on the fringe, and having a very safe place you can go to as a student is of utmost importance, either with a peer group or getting people, your, your, your teachers and counselors and such to support your endeavors. And so my, I believe in providing that safe opportunity for all students, because I think all students, if they don't feel safe, they're not gonna be able to learn and have student achievement the way that they should. And so my, I would look out for, and District C, being very diverse, like every other district, I would do everything I could to ensure that we had a safe environment for every student to feel, feel that they were comfortable, and had an opportunity to learn and be successful to the best of their ability inside the school district.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey, Trustee, take it, you're good? Okay, I'm District E, so I am next.
All right.
All right, as the body, the board, as the body, we're charged with the leadership of the district, as you know. The board currently has some leadership strengths, and also some gaps, and you referred a little bit to that a little bit earlier. Please share your opinion on the leadership, the leadership gaps that we have, and how would you, how could you help us to fill them?
Thank you, yeah, there's a couple of them, one of course is the parental perspective, which I've touched on, and I could definitely look at bringing that value to this board.
I'm sorry, what perspective?
Oh, sorry, the parental perspective.
Parental, you know.
Seeing to the parental.
We're talking through, we're talking through.
Seeing to the parental lens.
Gotcha, parental perspective, thank you, sorry.
Yes, no, it's all right. So seeing to the parental lens, I think would add a lot of value to the decision-making of this body, you know, going through, and again, the last 15, 15 months have been very brutal on my family and a lot of friends and family that we're familiar with, and the challenges I've gone through that. And I'm not saying that I would have been able to, having that perspective would have changed anything, but I think we would have had much better conversation in terms of the impact that these decisions have had on families of kids, student athletes, youth sports, and things like that, I'd like to have a, have more discussion around that. And then secondly, if you've been watching board, these board meetings like I have, every board policy meeting and every board meeting for the last, oh, seven months, there's some divisiveness on this board, you know, there's not, there's, there's some disharmony on this board, and I believe that I can add some more, not civility, but I can add another, another voice of reason to help bridge and build buy-in and support, and make sure that that we, that there is camaraderie on this board, and help clear up, or at least mitigate any mistrust that the community might have towards this body today.
Thank you, Ms. McCaffrey.
Thank you.
We're gonna go on to District F, Trustee Calvert?
Good morning.
Let's get, let's get your mic on. Yep, there we go, all right. Again, pull that a little bit closer to you as well, that mic, you can make sure he hears.
Thank you, Ms. Andy.
Awesome.
All right. In your experience, what have you done that shows you are willing to listen to different views when coming up with your decisions?
Yes, thank you. I'll give you a couple of examples. Again, back to the Alliance, you know, we're looking at how we can create an opportunity for all the kids in the North Valleys to be successful and have the same opportunities as other students of the school district. And when I, and to do that, I had to meet with all nine principals, you know, there's six elementary schools, two middle schools, one high school, and the important thing was to create alignment among those nine principals, because if we had nine principals going in nine different directions, it'd be very difficult to get community support to get anything done. And so what I was able to do was meet with all nine principals and identify what was important for them. What was important for them was having money for the elementary school principals to have money for field trips, because field trips are important, and a lot of those kids had never been to the Pioneer Theater, or had never been to inside of the business before. And so that was one, it was one area of alignment, so listen to that, as well as having access to, for high school kids to have internship opportunities, and then for the middle schools, having them, having those students have access to walk through the Amazons or other, other businesses to see what college of career readiness really meant. And so listening to those nine principals, then, and to get alignment, I can take that and then go get buy-in from the business community and create this ecosystem idea where all, all the students could, could benefit from the same opportunities. So that's an example I have for you, is that, you know, it's not, it wasn't my program, my, my goal was just to ensure that all the students had opportunities they didn't have before, and the way to do that was to get buy-in from all nine principals that could then sell to the business community. So that's an example I have for you. And then another example I have is, for example, I'll give you, well, it's interesting, I have a whole new level of respect for everybody at this table, because I've never stopped public office before. And the example I have, or the analogy I have is, you can tell somebody that the burner is hot, but until you feel it for yourself, you don't know how hot it really is, and then you realize, well, I think I'm gonna be a little more careful next time I do that. And so there's, this past week has been interesting for me personally, and I've had a lot of conversations, a couple of different topics, something that I was unfamiliar with, that I've gotten a lot more familiar with over the last 72 hours. And so you take that feedback, and that's how you learn, that's how you grow. If you're not uncomfortable, you're not growing, and trust me, last, the last week or so has been pretty uncomfortable, and that's how, that's how you get better and evolve. So thank you.
I just wanted you to follow up on your nine principals. So this is a large school district, so how would you suggest, or how would you incorporate that to the other schools within the district?
Sure, depends on what is it we're talking about, how big and, and how, how wide the strategy has to be, but it comes down to, you know, who are the stakeholders, what are we trying to accomplish, who are the stakeholders, and what's the message, you know, what does the end game look like? And then once you gather up all that information to support that vision, and you get all the information, you gather all the information together, I'm very good at collaboration, I'm very good at building buy-in, I'm very good at building long-term relationships on behalf of, and I've demonstrated that. So on behalf of the school district, it's about identifying, you know, what it is that we're trying to solve, the problem we're trying to solve, and identifying who it is, which organizations do we need to get that buy-in, to get that, this thing solved, and then what that end game, or what that, what does a solution look like, and then we can, we can sell that solution to make sure that we get the, get the right stakeholders involved and start working on the plan. You bet.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey, yeah, you're good, Trustee Calvert?
Yes.
You're good, okay, thank you. All right, District G, Dr. Nicolet.
Hello, welcome, G for gigantic.
[laughing]
All right, how do you think Washoe County School District policy, board policy informs the trustees' work?
Well, I've watched a few of the board policy meetings this last few months, and for example, district speech is an example, so board policy 4500 is an example, as well as listening to Mr. Mathers give information on the balanced budget in the past couple of years, which is awesome. So here comes, you know, the leadership of the school district looks to the board for decisions, looks to the, to the board for vision and for approval and for things like that. And so there's no way for the board to make adequate decisions unless you go through these board policies and identify where the gaps are, or identify where the holes are, or identify what the problems are you trying to solve. And so those, those types of problem solving, those types of discussions that happen during board policy, that, those discussions help inform the board about what kind of actions need to be taken, and so that directly, that directly helps or derives the decision-making of this body. Well, thank you for the question.
Oh, good, Dr. Nicolet, seems like, okay. All right, great, this is where we are, we have nearly halfway through, and we've worked through all the questions, so you, no, that's okay, there's no time thing one way or another, so please don't, don't read anything into that. But it gives you plenty of time to make whatever closing remarks you'd like to make, except plenty of time left, you can certainly use it as you like, within reason, we learned that last time. But yeah, whatever closing remarks you'd like to leave with us before we finish this interview, it's, the time is yours.
Sure, sure, thank you. Couple things, and again, you mentioned Andrew a minute ago, EC, I have the utmost respect for what he did for this district and the community in his serving for the last year and a half, or two and a half years, and I was so pleased to meet with him for that three-hour period, just because of his candor, and he was very honest in terms of the challenges that this board is currently facing, some of the issues that are currently coming before the board, as well as the time commitment. And again, that just galvanized my resolve, recognizing that, you know, having skin in the game, not just being a taxpayer or a concerned community citizen, but a parent, and how important it is right now to, to have that voice, at least have the opportunity to lend that voice to this body. And the time commitment, it's, it's a little scary, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot going on here, the volume of information that comes through, is a lot of information to process, and it takes a lot of preparation. And so with that, I've got, I had to have a very real conversation with my wife and my child, my son, and again, he's a dual-sport athlete at Spanish Springs, playing JV baseball and on the freshman football team, and that too is a full-time commitment. It's because of him that I'm here before you today, because I do have the time, and I've got the dedication, and I've got the resolve to really make a positive impact on this body, so I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCaffrey, we appreciate it as well. So thank you for being here, thank you certainly again for taking the time out and all that you've done to rigorously jump into this process.
Yes, thank you.
Your time's up again, you're certainly welcome to stay, right, if you'd like to for the next, I think we have two interviews left, so you, we have three, three interviews left, sorry about that, three, but you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like, inside of the room, because you've, you've done with your part, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Since we're at three, and we're gonna pull, so why don't we take a quick, like, take a little 10 minutes for a little personal relief if we need so, or that might just be me, but.
Me too.
So 10 minutes, we'll come right back in 10 minutes, okay? Thanks, everybody. We see you've had an opportunity to review the questions, so we won't, we won't pause for that, we're just going to, just again, as a, as a reminder, you'll get a chance to have opening remarks, okay? And then, well, each trustee has a question that we'll ask, same questions of everyone, so that we're right consistent, certainly want to do that, and then trustees may ask a follow-up to any other questions that may hear, or their own, right, as, as appropriate. And then at the very end, we'll, you'll have an opportunity to give any closing remarks, okay? The 30 minutes will be on the clock, so you can always kind of watch yourself, make sure you're getting into things that are important to you, and again, you've reviewed the questions, so why don't we go ahead and get started with your opening remarks?
Good morning, honorable trustees, and thank you again for allowing me the opportunity.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for interrupting you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to thank you. Let me thank you, that would be appropriate, I thank everyone else, and I want, I certainly, because it's just important to do so, thank you very much for all that, you know, this is, I can't imagine the ride this must, actually, I can, because I've been here, so, another kind of ride this has been probably over the last week, especially for you, and so we just really appreciate it, so forgive my interruption, but it's appropriate for me to get that on the record as well, so please, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable trustees, and thank you for, again, for allowing me the opportunity to stand before, or sit before you today, in evaluation of my candidacy, candidacy. I would like to reiterate my strengths and highlight a few additional reasons why I should be your pick for the vacancy in District C. I love my community, I have lived in Reno more than half of my life, I would bring more than just my education and experience to the position if selected. I'm proud to call Reno home, my husband and I have three children here, all who were or are Washoe County School District students, but I actually have hundreds of kids in our schools. I once had a coworker ask, how many kids do you actually have? Because I regularly talk about my kids and events or activities surrounding our youth. I had to explain that when I talk about my kids, I meant mine, as well as the kids I mentor, coach, or teach at Sunday School. My kids know that they can call Coach Candy or Miss Candy at any time or on any day, and I will be there for them. As a first-generation college student, I know all too well the barriers to education and even high school graduation. I applaud the improvement, the improvements in our high school graduation rates, but know that as a trustee, if selected, I would work so hard on this board to continue to improve those numbers. This is the kind of person that I want to see as an addition on this board, someone who is truly there for the kids and understands the issues which are affecting them. I'm not a political person by nature, but I strive to do what is morally and ethically correct. I will hear all sides of an issue and make a decision based upon fact and what is best for the kids. This is the same as what I do now in my volunteer work. In running a nonprofit organization, I must make difficult decisions, but I ensure that I have done all of the research in order to find the most correct solution. I know that no one can ever make everyone happy, but most importantly, I have to make the best choice I could, which is defensible and justified, and in line with the wishes of the constituents, the constituency which I represent. One of the main pillars of teamwork is compromise, I'm willing to accept another's idea if it is better. I am a collaborator, I strive to work together to find a solution which I strive to work together to find a solution which meets all of the needs. I'm an oxymoron. I'm a millennial who still likes to write things down with pen and paper. I can look at a problem, and though I may have a cultural or historical reference, I will hear all sides before I make a decision. I champion innovation, but appreciate tradition at the same time. I would like to highlight that as a millennial, I can bring a difference of perspective. This is one of the many instances of diversity which I can bring to this board. With the vacancies left by honorable trustees Cado and Thigpen, the board is losing the millennial perspective. Bless you. I would like to address that I love my job and am blessed to have the flexibility to be able to serve on this board if chosen. I have no political motives and I'm only here because I love my community. This is another avenue to have meaningful impact for the children and families which I serve. Thank you for the opportunity to elaborate on my qualifications.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenzo. We're going to go and start with just trustee Church, District A. Sir.
Thank you. Question. How can the Washoe County School District improve the quality of education in the Washoe County School District?
That's a great question and one that I probably cannot answer in thirty minutes, even if that was the only question I had to answer. It's a multifaceted problem. There's a lot of things that we have to address, which I know is not easy, including disparate treatment, zoning of schools. I've heard from people that they want to think about the time that school starts. I know that there's people that are proponents of maybe changing to later start times, which would be a logistical nightmare because of bus lines and everything else. It's not an easy solution. There are many parts to the problem. I do think that I would work to build upon the work that is already being done by this board. Like I said, graduation rates are improving. I'm seeing more involvement of PIFs in the schools and getting parents more involved. I also think that really focusing on emotional intelligence of our students could be something that could help, because we need to focus on the student as a whole. A lot of kids have different barriers to education, having to work. I had to work a full-time job while I was in high school, I understand that. Whereas I was taking AP classes and only had a certain day to take a test. It made it very difficult for people like me that had to work. So there's a lot of different barriers that we have to education that we can improve upon. I do believe that now with technology, it's a lot more innovative than when I went to school a long time ago. But we need to focus on really using technology to our advantage and making sure that we have the same, that we allocate the same experiences to all of our students regardless of what school they go to. I would also really focus on drawing in the parents. Part of that would be to have more bilingual people that can translate, not just Spanish, but Tagalog is another big language here. And I know that it's, we do provide written curriculum and written things, but it's different than when someone's actually speaking it. And I think that that's something that we can really improve upon and kind of focus on that. The other thing is we can improve upon just our sports. I was a person that was in band, I was in sports. I think by having more things outside of academia that are related would be helpful. I think having more clubs, things like that available are also good for our students. That's what kept me out of trouble. The fact that I was in MUN and did band and did sports, it really kept me focused on doing things at school and not doing extracurricular activities that were perhaps not the best for me. Also, I think that we could have a presence more at the actual schools and meet day-to-day. I know one of the things that we did where I grew up was, our superintendent would actually come out to the schools and have lunch with us once in a while. If you were one of the kids that was scored really well, you could have lunch with a trustee or a superintendent. And sometimes that matters, because when you say you know children by name and by face by graduation, you make them feel like they matter. I don't want to go to, into the pulling of the heartstrings, but I'm not a statistic because people cared. And I grew up in a really rough school, and people took the time to know my name and to tell me you're better than this, and that's why I'm here today.
Good, trustee Church. I see you're nodding, you're good, okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lorenzo. We're going to go to District B, Clerk Meneteau.
Welcome. Since we are required by law to teach social justice, in your opinion, what would that look like?
This is a touchy subject. I'll tell you my thinking about social justice is, I'll go back to my own childhood, because that's what I can draw upon. It's very similar to when I was in school and my very Catholic, traditional mother was so scared that I was going to go into the share program. Because she was convinced that if I went to the share program, it was going to be something bad. Until she actually went in and reviewed the curriculum and saw it was very medical, very used proper verbiage, and it wasn't as scary as she thought it was going to be. So I think social justice, in my opinion, should be the truth. But I know that Washoe County has a longstanding tradition of having transparency and providing materials to the parents. I do believe that we should have a period where we allow the parents to review the materials, because even though it's out there and I know that you can review it, not all parents know that. And it should also be reviewed in different languages so that they can actually see the curriculum and see what it is, and not just see what the news or somebody else is telling them. So once we have that review period, I would like to maybe get input from the parents and community leaders. As a parent myself, I like to be involved in what my children learn. I was on the O'Brien Advisory Council where we talked about mental health and bullying and social and emotional learning. I would also like, just as a parent, to have some sort of involvement and teach what that looks like. Not to go into the meaty part of that, like I said, I think we really need to talk about the truth. I think it's a travesty that we, as Americans, sometimes don't know our own history. I went to Mexico City when I was twenty years old. And it wasn't until I went to Mexico City that I even knew that the United States had invaded Mexico City and had taken over Chapultepec Castillo. So that, I think, shows that we have some lack of information on our part. And I actually took AP history, it just wasn't a part of the curriculum. So do I think that we need to demonize or further divide people? I don't believe that that's the case. I just think we need truth and transparency in what has actually happened in this country.
Good, trustee Meneteau, thank you very much. We're going to keep it moving and go over to District D, trustee Thigpen.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Lorenzo. And as one millennial, I will say I still like to write things too. Diligently taking notes. So how will you work to ensure a safe, positive, accepting, and welcoming environment for all of our students and staff, including but not limited to our LGBTQ plus and BIPOC populations?
Another great question. So without outing anybody in my family, I have a LGBTQ person within my own family. And it's something that we have had to work upon within our own family. I have, like I said, a very traditional family. And it's basically teaching others, there's nothing to be afraid of. They're still the same person, they just like somebody different than what you pictured in your mind. When you pictured the person on their wedding day, may not be what you pictured, but they're still going to do everything that a regular, regular, I use in quotations, person does. And those are the words that I use to explain that to my family. And while it won't be as personal when we're talking to others, I think the truth is people need to be supportive in order for their emotional growth and emotional health, no matter who they are, no matter what they choose. It's kind of a very divisive topic, I know, but at the end of the day, I just want to treat people like people and treat them the way they need to be treated. As educators, the job of the people at the district is to educate the youth and continue their emotional and academic growth. And you can support that by supporting the whole person. Whereas maybe you don't have to be accepting of their choices. You still have to accept them as a person and treat them just like anybody else. I would also really emphasize on clubs and things like that. When I was growing up, I remember there was an ally club and I was a part of that. I don't know that the school districts all have that. I know North Valleys High School had it because my daughter went there. But I think that just having people on, in the schools that are willing to be advisors for those clubs would be great. Just having open information and teaching people, don't be afraid of this. Because that's the thing, is ignorance brings fear. And if you can just show, hey, they're still the same person, with my family member, that was literally what I did. Still the same person you knew in diapers, still the same person you loved, except this is their choice. And I think education will combat ignorance, misinformation will combat ignorance, and that will all lead to more trust and less fear and more acceptance.
I see you're nodding, trustee Thigpen, okay? Thank you very much, Ms. Lorenzo. On next, District E.
Here's my question. As the body, the board is the body that's charged with the leadership of the district. The board currently has some leadership strengths, but we also have some gaps, some leadership gaps. Please share your opinion on the leadership gaps and how you could help fill them.
Well, I respect everybody on this board and the differences of opinions that you bring, because that's important. In order to have change and innovation, you have to have diversity of thought. One of the things that I would bring is I did have a different upbringing probably than most of you here. I love Nevada, though, and I have a love for all of our community members and our children here. So I would bring that same passion that I believe everybody here has, or else you wouldn't be on this board. I talked to somebody this weekend that asked me, you know, why are you crazy? And, but Dr. Taylor said they referred me to a psychiatrist and told me that I might need to get my head examined. But the thing is, we all care about kids and we're all here for the right reasons. I don't believe anybody here has a political agenda. I do not as either. So that's not something that I bring that's different. It's something that I mirror in everybody here. I do think that I do have a strong educational background in human resources. And that would probably help with some personnel policy issues if they came up. I also currently work for a local municipal government, which would also bring some strengths in policy procedure, things that I'm familiar with and comfortable with. Other than that, leadership strengths, I am a grassroots founder of the AYSO community out in North Valleys. While the organization was already out there, we did falter and lose some people. And I've been diligently working on getting our numbers back up and servicing people and giving scholarships to people that may not otherwise have the option to participate in youth sports. So I would bring that community perspective where I represent people that I work with day in, day out. Most of the people in the Stead area know me, just from at the school, at the church, in North Valleys. I've also worked with people out in Spanish Springs, because I trained the coaches at AYSO in Spanish Springs. So I do have ties to the community there as well. I think that is my big strength that I bring, that though everybody is impressive, I think my work in the community itself is good. Sorry, there's a lot to this question. Another one of my strengths is my communication. I'm a great communicator. I am not afraid to approach somebody and have a conversation, even if it's not somebody that I already know. And of course, I do bring that bilingual, where I can have conversations with people in Spanish. I was really humbled to read a lot of the letters of recommendation which I received. One of them was in Spanish, and I think that's very telling, because I do not believe that that person would have ever reached out to the board had it not been for my candidacy. And I think that's a strength that I bring that is necessary at this time. It's not something that should get me the position in and of itself, but it is a strength that I have that the board is lacking currently at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenzo. Okay, I see you follow-up, trustee Church.
I don't know if it's appropriate, I'm just going to clarify, there is a Spanish speaker on the board already.
Right, you're bilingual.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, I did not know that, sorry.
No, I have a problem.
Okay, thank you, trustee Church. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had a question, but you're next, okay. District L, trustee Calvert is next with her question from District L.
Good morning and thanks for being here. In your experience, what have you done that shows you are willing to listen to different views when coming up with your decision?
So in my work that I currently do at a local municipality, I work to create recruitment and retention plans for positions. I have to work with subject matter experts that know the job better than myself. So I have to be able to take their information and really come up with a plan that fits everybody's needs. I'm not, my ego's not so big that I think I'm the person that knows everything about every single position that we hire. So I do sometimes have to go and work in the Parks Department and find out a Parks Maintenance worker, or go to finance and find out what an accounting assistant actually does. So I think that a lot of my experience shows that I'm able to work in a collaborative effort to make sure that we do what's best for the constituents. I also, just in my personal volunteer work, working with AYSO, there's a lot of people on the board, a lot of different positions. When you're working with two-hundred-plus families, there's a lot of opinions that come into play. And the fact that we're able to put off a season every year where the kids don't know any issues that happened, that's what matters to me. With COVID, we had a lot of differing opinions that happened when we still put on the spring season this year. And the fact that the kids were able to kick the ball in the field without ever knowing that there was all these issues and political opinions on the outside that happened on the backside, that's what matters to me. And that's what shows that I'm able to collaborate and do something that's the best for the community and the kids.
So from what you've just said, how does that all relate to students in the Washoe County School District?
So at the end of the day, we all want our students to learn and grow and be felt, accepted, and seen. And I believe that we can all work together to make sure that that's what we do and that even if we don't agree upon something, at the end of the day, we still have the best interests of the children at heart. And that's what we do.
Thank you, trustee Calvert. And then finally, District G, trustee Nicolet.
Hello and welcome. Thank you. By the way, District G, G stands for gigantic. How do you think Washoe County School District board policy informs the trustees' work?
So in my career, I currently work to support a commission. So I understand the rules, regulations, and what happens with policy and procedure. I do think that it should be a guideline to everything that we do. I do think that the policy sometimes can change to better align with what the trustees are trying to do. But there needs to be the proper procedure in order to do that. But for the meantime, I do believe that policies and procedures have been in the works for us to follow. If there were to be a change, I believe that communication is key so that we can make sure that all the stakeholders believe in what we're trying to do. And also, it's important for us to have the same integrity as the policy, as the, excuse me, the Washoe County School District had in mind when they created the policy. So sometimes I know that rules or policies can be vague or clear. It's important to talk to council or subject matter experts to make sure that we're following the policy and procedures and make sure that everything that we do is in align with the vision and the mission statement of the school district.
Oh, good, Dr. Nicolet, okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lorenzo. You still have some minutes left when we finish with all of our questions and follow-ups. So we will turn it over to you for any closing remarks that you'd like to leave with us.
Okay. Thank you for all of your questions and for allowing time for my long-winded answers. My main hope is that the passion I have for our youth shown through in my responses and my statements. I have the education, knowledge, skill, and ability to be a trustee, but most importantly, I have the heart. I thank you for your time and dedication. I know this process is very involved. I would also like to thank you for this opportunity and for helping me gain additional perspective on why I volunteer. I was very humbled by the letters of support which I received. It proved to me that what I do matters. I would also like you to know that whomever you shall select, please know that I would still like to be utilized as a bridge to my community. As the only candidate from the North Valleys and the only Spanish-speaking millennial, I will gladly serve to help this board meet its goals in whatever capacity I'm called upon to fill. A goose will fly seventy-five percent further in formation with other geese. That's more than it can fly alone. Let's fly together to accomplish our goals.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Lorenzo. Again, we appreciate you vigorously jumping into the process and being fully engaged in it. And as we go on, we have two more candidates, as you know. We're certainly welcome to sit and stay and be here in the meeting for the rest of the process, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our scientific, keep that cup up, J.J., keep that, our scientific, let's see who's next cup.
Ed Kendall.
Okay, we'll take a couple of minutes and wait for Ms. to welcome Mr. Kendall. Mr. Kendall, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to give you a moment to review those questions in just a moment. Just a quick little review. Again, you'll have 30 minutes for this process, right? We'll start with, you'll have an opportunity to address the board. Any opening remarks you'd like to share with us? And then each trustee has a question. We'll ask those questions, and any trustee may have a follow-up to their own question or to any other, right? And then you'll have an opportunity to give whatever final closing remarks you'd like to leave us with as we deliberate, as we consider. You should have, again, you'll have 30 minutes for this whole process. The questions that we're going to ask you are right there before you. So we're going to give you a little time just to take a look, familiarize yourself with those, and then we'll go ahead and get started, sir.
Great questions.
Well, on behalf of all of us, I'll just say thank you for each of us. Thank you so much. We're going to start in the same order as the page, because we're going in order of our districts. So we're going to start with trustee Church, District G. Oh, I'm sorry, I keep, dang it. Opening comments. Thank you very, thank you, trustee Church. Yes, opening comments.
Did my time start?
Your time will start as you begin your opening comments. That's the part of your 30 minutes, okay? All right, thank you, sir.
I'll make it quick then. Good morning, President Taylor and trustees and superintendent McNeil.
Hang on, hang on just a moment. We'll start you over. Okay. Trustee Nicolette was enjoying that, so we appreciate the community members stepping out during that time. Okay, why don't we start you over so you don't have that interruption? We want to get, in case you need to get your flow going, that'll be okay. All right, go ahead.
I'd like to say I'm honored to be here. When I heard that there was an opening in my district, I decided to apply. I did this because for over 20 years, I served and protected Nevada's future. I've also worked with many of you, as well as leadership, from school district leadership as well as school administration leadership. And I've been honored to work with numerous superintendents in the school district. I've also been honored to be elected numerous times to serve as the Washoe County School Police Officers President of their union and to represent my peers through labor negotiations as well as attending leadership committees to help better employment. I had the opportunities to take the time to make and represent my peers, both in labor negotiations and working with leadership, superintendent and police leadership. As an officer, I've gotten to work with so many wonderful staff members and students all over Washoe County School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Now we will go to trustee Church, District G.
All right, thank you. How can the Washoe County School District improve the quality of education within the Washoe County School District?
Thank you very much for that question, trustee Church. So I know that the Washoe County School District, the education comes down from the state of Nevada. And I get it that being a trustee is part of our job is to make policies, regulations for the district. And the superintendent's job is to implement those policies, rules, and regulations that are made by the district. And being a trustee, we are, we have to follow NAC and NRS guidelines. So in order to make education in the Washoe County School District improvement is we need to hire the best of the best and to retain the best. Currently, I would say that the district is, due to the pandemic, we've been losing teachers, I think, not just teachers, but support staff, you know? So in order to have a good educational experience is we also have to have that good support staff. And I know currently we're short on subs, bus drivers, cafeteria workers. So in order for us to have a better education, I think we need to start with taking care of our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Trustee Church, you're good? Okay, you're very welcome. Okay, Clerk Manette, District B?
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Since we are required by law to teach social justice, in your opinion, what would that look like?
Ooh, that's a really good question. I think oftentimes when people are trying to teach social justice, they try to teach their beliefs or their opinions. And I think what it needs to be is, it needs to be probably a little broader where we're not forcing our personal beliefs or our personal opinions upon the students for social justice. I think it starts with educating them early on. And as they continue through their career through the school district, I think then you continue to build upon that. So you got to start early and continue to build upon social justice all the way through because we all know, you're all educators, that everybody learns at different rates, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. I'm looking in. Looks like you're good, trustee Manette. Okay. That's okay. District D, trustee Thigpen, you're up, sir.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Kendall, and thank you for your years of service to the district. As someone who strove to serve and protect, I think this is a good question. How will you work to ensure a safe, positive, accepting, and welcoming environment for all of our students, including but not limited to our LGBTQ+ and BIPOC youth and staff?
Thank you, trustee Thigpen. That's a great question. As a former police officer, I've often been told by numerous staff members and as well as other officers in the district, as an officer, I was very approachable to all students. Oftentimes, they would come to me with a problem, and I would sit down and I would try to address the problem and figure out what the root of that problem was and hopefully help them out. I tried to always reserve my own personal opinions and my judgments, and I wanted to listen to everything. So I think to ensure the safe, positive, and accepting, and welcoming environment for our LGBTQ+ community and the BIPOC youth is we have to help educate everybody and let them understand that people are people. Doesn't matter what you choose, whatever gender, whoever you are, whatever the color of your skin, we're all people. And at the end of the day, you know, we're here to get an education and to better ourselves. So I would like to continue with seeing and providing a safe environment. Our police officers here are phenomenal. I've worked with some of the best people and, sorry, one of the toughest names was retiring.
It's okay, take your time. It's okay.
Thank you very much.
You ready to go on, Mr. Kendall? We have a moment, okay?
We're good.
Okay. Okay. I'm next. I have your next question, sir, District E. As the board is charged, we're charged with the leadership of the district as the board of trustees. And we currently have some leadership strengths, and we also have some gaps. Please share your opinion on the leadership gaps and how you could help to fill them.
Well, I know, first of all, stepping in and filling trustee Cottle's position is going to be huge. Those are going to be some giant shoes to fill. Trustee Cottle got out and about and met with his schools, I know that. Oftentimes, I was lucky to have conversations with him and respected those conversations. I know that this is a young board, and it's not always easy doing what we do. Often, we're not always going to agree, but I think at the end of the day, you know, we can all agree to disagree and at least come to a compromise for what's best for our students, our staff, our faculty. And I feel that being honored to be elected numerous times as union president, I got to serve my peers. They all understood that sometimes I got to make a hard decision. And, you know, I try to do what's best for everybody. And that's what I would bring to this board. Hopefully, working with every one of you to get our end game is taking care of our students, staff, and faculty.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
We're going to go to District F, trustee Calvert.
Welcome, Mr. Kendall. In your experience, what have you done that shows you are willing to listen to different views when coming up with your decision?
Great question, trustee Calvert. In my law enforcement career of 26 years, you know, you all know, sometimes you don't always get to meet people that are cooperative or they want to argue with you or be argumentative. And I feel that as an officer and also working in the school district, because we all know children sometimes don't always want to pay attention, but by at least showing that you care and that you're listening intently, so, and then treating everybody with the same amount of respect. I often would tell kids, I would have kids come into my office yelling, venting, screaming, using profanity. And I'd just sit there and look at them, and then they would sit down and they'd say, well, you're not yelling at me back. And I was like, no, I'm going to let you vent. And then I'm going to talk. And I showed you respect by letting you do what you had to do, and I expect the same. And then we can get down to the root of the problem. And that's what I would do.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Looks like you're good. You have a follow-up or you're good?
Please.
Please, go right ahead.
So how do you earn their respect so that they feel that they're comfortable coming to you and talking to you about things that maybe they can't talk to their parents about?
You know, sometimes that's tough, that's tough. The big thing is, is showing that the students and even adults, that you actually do care and that you're willing to listen to hear what they have to say. I mean, oftentimes, you know, we as adults, we might, somebody might be talking over here and whatnot, and we kind of look at them a little bit, and you look away and you're not paying attention. So that often lets people think that, oh, okay, he really doesn't care about me. I often would try to reach out, find a common ground. Hey, they're wearing a sports team. Oh, that's a great sports team. Who do you like? You know, start my small chit chat like that. Try to build a rapport. The important thing is building rapport with people. And once you get that rapport, they start to feel comfortable and they're willing to open up and talk to you about some issues. Some of the issues are hard issues where people don't want to always come right out and figure it out. And if I can, I would often direct them to somebody maybe they feel a little more comfortable in talking with. Oftentimes, females don't want to talk to males. They feel more comfortable talking to a female officer. So I would get a female officer to come over and chat with them a little bit and then try to work through the problem. So ultimately, it comes down to, I think, just making people feel comfortable and letting them know that you're actually there to help them. Did that answer your question? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Okay, now to District G. Doctor Nicolette?
Thank you, welcome. And again, thank you for all your service to Washoe County School District. And a big thank you for referring to the board, you too, President Taylor, as young. I really like hearing that. Thank you. Okay, here we go. How do you think Washoe County School District Board policy informs the trustees' work?
So when you're... Sorry, just a clarification. So when you ask, how do I feel that or think that the WCSD board policy informs the trustees' work? Are you more or less referring back to the NRS and the NAC codes that govern the boards?
Good question. No, I'm referring to the board policies that have been created throughout the years and we continually update that cover all operations of the school district.
So the board regulations and stuff that are made, I mean, they're made for, you know, safety, education, for employees to have some kind of a guidance in their daily operations. It's a needed necessity. And I think oftentimes, you know, people, when they come to these board meetings, they think that trustees willy-nilly go out and just make regulations at will and how they want. But the policies that the board makes, I think it comes down to is you've got to follow a guidance from the state, from federal government, down to the local governments. And that's where, as a trustee, I would like to think that we all will create policies that will work within our district. And then I get it that from there, the superintendent puts out the policies to the rest of the school district employees. Thank you.
You covered that, doctor Nicolette. Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Mr. Kendall, we have gone through all of our questions and follow-up. And so now it's your opportunity, you have several minutes left, so certainly take your time. Now it's your opportunity for any final or closing remarks you'd like to leave with us as we finish your interview.
I jot it down, a little bit of notes. So in closing, board, I would like to say, filling trustee Cottle's shoes will be big ones, which I've said before. And I am ready for the challenge that faces me in filling those shoes. I want to be in it for the long haul and not the short haul. My intentions are, I get it that I'll finish out his term, but I also have intentions of running for that seat in an election. So that shows I'm in it for the long haul. Also knowing that trustee Thigpen's seat will be opening and a new trustee being appointed. Now, more than ever, having a person on the board with knowledge and prior experiences in the district can help in making tough decisions and working with the rest of the board is important. I feel my past experience as a union leader and a former police officer in the district will allow me to help assist the board and the constituents of my district and the students and staff of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. And thank you again for throwing your hat in the ring and being a And, uh, thank you again for, for throwing your hat in the ring and being a part of this process. We really appreciate it. And, um, thank you for your service to the district.
Thank you.
Um, in the years before you retired. And so now we're going, we have one, one candidate left, I believe, one applicant left. And so you're certainly welcome, sir, to, to stay in the room if you so desire, and then we'll go on from there. Mr. Kendall? Yeah, but I think... You can upgrade, this is a good time to upgrade if you'd like. Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Last candidate is John Gaultney.
Dr. Gaultney, welcome, sir.
Well, thank you.
Please, yep, have a seat right there.
I suppose this is the hot seat, right?
It, it, can certainly be called, be called that. Uh, just as a, again, a quick review, um, we've, we've gone over it before, you'll see before you, the questions we're gonna go over, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to review those in just a moment. Just again, a quick review.
Oh, okay.
Um, you'll have, uh, you have 30 minutes for the entire process. You, you can begin with opening remarks, any opening remarks you'd like to share with the Board. And then each trustee has a question that we'll ask, and, uh, there may be follow-ups, either from that trustee or from another one, right? Maybe a follow-up to those questions. And then when we're finished with the questions, you'll also have, you'll, you'll have another opportunity to address, so just with whatever closing remarks you might want to add. And you get 30 minutes for that whole piece and time's there, so you wanna, you know, make sure you're paying attention to your time.
Well, I find it interesting, uh, I just took my glasses off because wearing a mask, I fog up my own glasses.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know if any of the wrist had that problem. So I can't quite read what's on the board up there, but anyhow, somehow...
No, you don't need the board.
Oh, okay.
Don't worry about it. You don't, you don't need the board, sir.
If I put the glasses back on in between, you'll understand what's going on.
That's quite right, do, do what you need to do to be able to see what you're doing. It's quite right, we're all, know this and we all understand.
Ah, good. I do appreciate that.
Understand that, certainly. So, um, so why don't we give you, we're just gonna give you a moment or so, just go ahead and review those questions in front of you.
Well, I'll need to put the glasses back on.
Put the glasses back on. Put the glasses back on.
I, uh, just reviewed the questions, I think they're excellent. So I assume the next step is for me to make a few opening remarks, and if that's appropriate, I'll start.
Please go right ahead, thank you, sir.
Uh, I'm gonna get rid of the glasses again so I can see.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to take a moment because, uh, previously we were all given five minutes. And when I got home, I kept thinking about things that I had said that I didn't get a chance to clarify, so if you'll give me a few minutes here, I'd like to do that. But for the record, my name is John Gaultney, I live at 220 Stags Leap Circle in Sparks, Nevada. I, uh, am pleased and appreciate the opportunity to visit with you today about District C. I have a strong commitment to education, I've been in some form or another in education, I guess, uh, since I was seven years old. I spent time in the, the standard and then off to college and all the standard things that go with that. Taking the time to quickly point out to you that my remarks previously were based in, in two big categories. The first was to talk about boards, per se. I have a strong history of the number of boards that I've served on and the number of boards that I have been employed by. I would hope that, that should you select me, that the experience with those boards would be valuable to you. I attended your workshop that was provided by the professor, and I hate to admit that I lost his name, but I did. But he did an excellent job, and I thought for a four-hour presentation, he covered a lot of important things. The first of which I thought he was, he said, and if I'm wrong, please forgive me, but he said, "The Washoe County Bor-, uh, School Board could be more efficient than it currently is." I think he said that. I, uh, I'm an economist by trade and by nature, I like to find things that are efficient. And so, I would hope that some of the suggestions I might make as a new Board Member might be thought about as ways to improve, well, not necessarily to improve, but to, uh, increase the efficiency of the Board. There are a number of new technologies available that, when we all started in education, that weren't available. For example, backup data for, uh, and presentations for issues that go to your consent agenda. Uh, could be backed up by video, I think, and I'll use the judgment of the legal counsel, as backup data for, uh, things that go on your consent agenda. That's just one example of things that I think could help in the long run. Let me move to one other subject under Board. I have to admit that I am a legislative groupie. I love the process. And so, even though you are and should be, and I strongly support that you are nonpartisan, I love hanging around the legislature. And I've started doing that when I was much, much younger. And I hate to suggest or brag, but I think I've been fairly successful. I would hope to assist this Board by helping out with the legislative package, as well as maybe going to Carson City on occasion if necessary. Because, uh, I'm just never happier than I am around a legislative body. So, under the area of Board, I would suggest to you that I could help in those areas if you decide to, uh, allow me to do so. I also, in my presentation, five-minute presentation, talked about the students who are not four-year college-bound. And those have been students that are always of interest to me and I think very important, uh, that we give some thought to. I said to you, and I will repeat it, that you have done a great job in college graduation rate, those students who are going off. With a graduation rate over 80%, you've got a right to be very, very proud of that. I think you should and, and hope that you are. Less, I think, has been done for those students who are gonna terminate at the end of that, uh, 12 years in the public school system. I have spent some time calling EDON. Many of you know that EDON is the Economic Development Commission for Western Nevada. And its leadership has assured me that the things I'm about to mention can be worked out and should be worked out, and they're enthusiastic about these, number one. Should you select me, I'd like to help facilitate the process of going to the industrial park as a Board. And hearing the presentations of their personnel people about what kind of students they think they'd like to hire in the future. I mentioned to you that the Chamber of Commerce had said that eight out of 10 of those students will not need a four-year college degree. Am I opposed to universities and four-year college degrees? No, I have a four-year degree. I have a master's degree and a PhD. And I have probably the equivalent of another year and a half of grad work above the PhD in economics. I am not opposed to that. However, not everybody enjoys or wants to be a part of that activity. So I'm suggesting to you that it might be nice to listen to the people who are gonna hire a number of our students who graduate. Realizing that probably the thing which has impacted Northern Nevada the most in the last 15 years, there are two things. The first is the pandemic, and I know you are coping with the idea of how to catch up. Those students have fallen behind during the pandemic. I realize that's a major challenge. And I'd love to be able to tell you how to fix that, but I don't have the answer for that. I know you're struggling with it. However, on the other side, I think that if we go and look at what will employ a number of those young people, we'll have a feel for what's going on. The second thing. Realizing that I believe that there is an access, a way, to fund additional technical and occupational education, and I know budgets are always an issue. What is that way? I've taken a look at the idea of dual credit, and I congratulate you for already getting into this, but at the current time, dual credit with TMCC is only about 8% of its enrollment. To give you an idea, the Western Nevada Community College, 23% of its enrollment is in dual credit. If I say quietly, very, very low, that one of the advantages of dual credit is both the public school and the community college get the funding for that. I may be wrong, but I think that says that there is an access to dollars that could be very, very helpful in this area. So I think if we looked at that and, and gave it some thought, we might find a way to expand that capacity and do more for those students who are not headed to the university or even to the community college as college students. Finally, I asked the people at EDON as to whether there was currently a vehicle available so that those firms out in the, in the park could donate equipment and items to the public school system. And I, if I'm wrong, they didn't seem to know whether there was a vehicle available for that now. They would be excited to become the nexus that facilitates donating equipment from those corporations. And let me say for a minute, that the park has put great pressure on you, on the community, and so on. I believe, and I think they believe, there's a way that the park can begin to pay back those things that you have done so well for them. So these are a few of the things that are on my mind at the current time, and I will, looking at your list of questions, I will hold off on my closing remarks because my closing remarks included a couple of things that are already on your questions. So I'm at your disposal, I hope I didn't use too much of your time.
Thank you, Dr. Gaultney. And there's, there's still maybe time for your closing remarks, so...
Okay.
Okay, just case it as, as you will. We're gonna, uh, start, and if I didn't thank you, I wanted to make sure that I did, I, I don't remember if I did. Just thank you again for throwing your hat in the ring and being in this very public process, um, that is kind of weird and unusual and all of that. We really appreciate, um, that you, that you've taken the time to do that and really gotten after it rigorously, so thank you. Okay? We're gonna begin.
Thank you.
Very welcome. We're gonna begin with, uh, begin with District A, Trustee Church?
Thank you. How can the Washoe County School District improve the quality of education within the Washoe County School District?
Well, first of all, let me, uh, say that I'm going to address you as a group, uh, the answer. I, I realize that one, one trustee may ask the question, but I'm assuming that all of you are understanding the answer, at least from that standpoint. How can it improve the quality of education? Every system across the United States can improve in some way. I mean, there's certainly no question about that. I've already said that I think you've done a good job in the transfer rate and the fact that you're graduating over 80% of your students. I've identified the fact that I think those students who are not university or four-year college-bound, much more could be done for those students. Hopefully, the, along that line, I believe that you could make your public schools more open to the diversified culture that is emerging for Reno and the surrounding area. 25 years ago, I created the multicultural office at TMCC. And when I hired the director for the multicultural office, he asked me, "What do you want me to do?" And I said, "I'm gonna write a job description in about a year, but I'd like you to go out and do what needs to be done to make this facility more compatible with a different cultural basis." We invited in dancers from a different group of, uh, and I believe they were from, uh, Japan, if I remember correctly. We had multicultural food night at the college. We had, and, uh, we invited the, uh, and I don't know the appropriate title, but the head monk from, uh, San Francisco to come and address part of our student body. I think you have an option of talent here that could be pulled into the system. I know, it takes time and energy and all those kind of things. But I think we could make our schools more amenable to those discussions. Thank you for the question.
You're leaning in, Trustee Church, but to make, to make a note, you're good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gaultney. We're gonna go to District, District, uh, B. Ooh, that's it, yes. Yes, Trustee Manetto, Clerk Manetto.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Since we are required by law to teach social justice, in your opinion, what would that look like?
I anticipated this question, I thought about it a lot, a lot. And I, first of all, I want to tell you that I don't know. The bottom line is, I guess I don't know. I tried desperately not to make decisions until I've reviewed material and so on, and I have read not a single word that is the formal part of social justice. I've had a number of people tell me what it says, but I, I find that really uncomfortable. I, I would think it would be the case. I would hope, as a member of the Board, that the social justice subject would go through the normal curriculum people here at the, uh, public school system. I think this is, uh, where I divide the thinking on my part, I'm not trying to say you should, but I do, that I believe that you are a bipartisan Board and that you should stay out of politics. At the same time, I think the subject that social justice undertakes, which I said, I don't know as much about as I'd like to know, I, at the same time, I'm thinking that the subject, i- is a subject that needs to be explored and developed. And I need to confess right here, with 40 years of experience in public education, I was never very good at curriculum. Because I saw curriculum as being two parts. One, what you should teach, when you should teach it, and how you should teach it, that's one. Two, the issue is, what will be learned from what you taught? How much will be received and how much... How much will be received and how much will be valuable to the students who get it? I don't know the answer to that, and I wish I could tell you that I did know the answer. If there's anything on your list that I'm uncomfortable about telling you, it is that I really would like to have known more about this before I sat in front of you, because I did anticipate at some point you would ask this question.
Thank you, Clerk Manetto. We're going to go to Trustee Figpen, District D.
Thank you for being here, Dr. Gaultier. How will you work to ensure a safe, positive, accepting, and welcoming environment for all of our students, including but not limited to our LGBTQ+ and BIPOC youth and staff?
As a board member, I think your responsibility, or my responsibility as a board member, I should say, is to see to it that students are safe in their environment first. The very first thing that a student should know is that when they walk through the door, they're safe. Their lifestyle is not something I want to judge or be a part of judging or so on. It's not that I, you know, I'm probably old enough that I've seen a whole bunch go by. And I would like to suggest that what I would do first is encourage policies that make it safe for all students along that line. Secondly, I think it's important that we have an honest discussion in the schools about lifestyles and why people should be allowed to do. Maybe I can boil it down to something pretty simple along this line. I refer to my daughter Haley, who is my second daughter, as my favorite philosopher. And she tells me when I get too wrapped up in things that, Dad, life is not a dress rehearsal. This is the one that counts. And so I think it's important to allow everyone to exercise that to the highest degree they possibly can. So I guess that's probably the bottom line for it. I wish I had a better answer, but I think that's kind of it. You've got to make it welcoming, and you've got to make it safe.
Thank you, Trustee Figpen. Dr. Gaultier, I have the next question.
Oh, okay.
District E. As the body charged, the board is a body charged with the leadership of the district.
Yes.
And as a board, we currently have some leadership strengths. We also have some leadership gaps. Please share your opinion on the leadership gaps that we have and how you could help fill them.
Well, I think that partly goes back to the use of agendas and the way that you've structured that. Some time ago, I got the opportunity to go to a workshop at the University of Illinois. And the fellow there talking about boards talked about the fact that boards receive three levels of policy recommendations. The first one is, he called them As, and As are the things that directly involve dispensing education. Policy A is a policy that is directly involved in the delivery of education. Policy B is indirectly involved in the delivery of education, but it's important. Now, I probably will get stoned because of, by the way, some of you may know that my wife is Ellie Jackson, and she was in the public school system for 26 years. So I have a consultant at home who is noisy occasionally about my opinions. And so anyhow, those of you who know Ellie, she's not bashful to giving her opinion. But I think the point at hand here is that Bs need to get to the agenda occasionally, but not always. Cs need to get to the agenda very seldom, other than as, what do you call your consent agenda? You refer to it as consent agenda. Yeah. Most boards do. And I again would mention to you that I think the technology of the time would allow you to put support data in the form of video and other things online so that the media, the public, and even the board members can experience and understand what that item is without spending a lot of time in the board meeting itself. So I think that idea of providing leadership. Now, when I first assumed an administrative job years ago, one of my colleagues said to me, if you can do three things every day that will last more than two months, you'll finally get on top of the situation. Because I was complaining, and I was drowning. There were way more issues than I was capable of handling. So I hope you understand what I'm saying, is that the very first step is to take a hard look at the items that go on your agenda and realize that one of the ways of having leadership is having open and honest debates about major critical issues and respecting each other's opinions. I'm a firm believer in the yin and yang of education policy. The best policies come from people who exchange honest opinions about it, even if they're differing opinions. And in the long run, that'll produce the best policies. Now, not always the right policy, but the best policies. Okay? Does that help a little bit?
Sure does. Thank you very much. I do want to go back for clarification.
Yes.
You said the As are things that are directly involve the dispensing and delivery of education, and Bs indirectly, but they're important. The Cs, was that what the consent agenda?
That would be consent agenda almost always. Bs occasionally rise to the point of going to the board, but rarely ever take long conversations to resolve. Now, at the risk of being upset, occasionally you will, by the way, the guy who helps me with my yard at home is a custodian at one of your schools. And he'd probably be upset if he knew that I'm saying that what happens in the custodial ranks is probably most of the time C issues. Now, that's something that I know. But the only way to preserve enough time to have the kind of debates that you need to have is to make sure you're in efficient operation. And I would like to help in that process. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Gaultier. We're going to go to District F. Trustee Calvert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In your experience, what have you done that shows you are willing to listen to different views when coming up with your decision?
I think I'm pretty good at listening to different views. I have two daughters. We had a debate recently over how you pronounce Gaultier. Okay? Different views are common in our home. And now, what have I done publicly that suggests I'm open to different views? Well, I served on the advisory board for the county commission in the Spanish Springs area. And I had regular disagreements with people, not only contractors, but people on the board itself. I'm very much in favor of hearing opposing views. Philosophically, I've learned very little from people who agree with me. I feel good, but I don't learn much. I usually learn much, much more from people who disagree with me. They give me the things that I think I would like not to hear occasionally, but they are very, very significant in telling me what I need to be thinking about. So I guess what I would tell you is it's much more than just an event. It's a philosophy for me, that I want to hear what opposing people think. And I bet as the board, if you select me on the board, I will be patient with public comment that I might not agree with. I want you to know that. And I'll be patient with the comments that each of you makes that I might not agree with. But I certainly will respect you for your opinion, and hopefully you will respect me for mine.
So is there room for compromise?
Yeah, there's almost always room for compromise. I think half a loaf is a whole bunch better than no loaf. And I've spent much of my life dealing with half a loaf. And so part of why I enjoy watching legislators so much to work, and by the way, I like citizen legislators, because they tend to be more in line with people who are trying to just fix a problem. They're not career politicians for the most part. So I think one of the things I've observed, I cut my teeth on the Illinois Legislature when I was in my 30s, and I went to Kansas and worked with the Kansas Legislature. And I would tell you that it's interesting that compromise tends to happen quick in those environments, because there's so much at stake, and there are limited times, and so on. And that's quite often good. It's a real environment of let's make things work. And so I believe in compromise. I don't expect to always get everything that I want. That doesn't mean I'm not going to promote the ideas that I want, but I'm certainly not going to be upset if it's less than a loaf.
Thank you, Dr. Gaultier. Trustee Calvert, I think you're good. Okay. Dr. Nicolet, Trustee G, I mean District G.
Yes. District G for gigantic. It's nice to hear that you, in your home, also discuss how to pronounce your name. Because as long as I've known you, people have asked me, how do you say his name?
Yes, well.
I say John.
Yeah, I've better known him as John. Yeah.
So welcome. All right. How do you think Washoe County School District Board policy informs the trustees' work?
It's probably, when I read that one, it was the only question I read twice. And I would say to you that I think, before I would say I have an absolute answer for you, what I would say is I need to spend a little more time thinking about board policy here and a little more analytical. Believe it or not, I've learned a lot in the last week and a half. I know that the issues that you face are much more complicated than the average person out there is privy to. They just literally don't have that kind of connection. So I'm thinking that board policy as it now exists is so often dominated by state policy, so often dominated by state law, that it's hard for you to find the range in here. And I don't know that I have the answer for that. Hopefully, once I've spent some time studying this, and I guarantee you I will, because first of all, it's of interest to me, and then secondly, I think it's critical to making good choices in the long run. I'm in favor of open meetings. I'm in favor of legislation that requires you to be fair in all of those issues. But at the same time, it makes it difficult and time-consuming. I mentioned Ellie, and I want to mention her one more time here. Last night, as we were driving home from walking the dogs, she said to me, be sure you tell them that you understand that bureaucracies move slowly, that you're not going to come here and try to fix everything at one time. And I said, you know, I've spent a lot of time with bureaucracies, and I truly know that, and I'll tell them that, Ellie. I'll say that. Along with that concept, how does it help inform, and I think probably the bottom line is that you need to look at your board policies once a year to see if they're facilitating your work. The world changed for Northern Nevada dramatically in those two ways I mentioned earlier. The number of students who are behind a half a year or so on, I read in the newspaper, by the way, that number is larger than it's been in a very, very long time. And that's because of the pandemic. And let me tell you something. I've taught off and on for the last 40 years, and my heart went out to the teachers and the administrators that literally didn't know if they'd be in the classroom tomorrow. I couldn't have done that. I just couldn't have done it. So when you do look at your policies, what happens in the long run is you at least get the best policies to inform the board and so on that you can possibly come up with. Do I have some perceptions about how boards ought to function in relationship to their attorney? Yes, because I've had boards report to me as so on. Do I have concepts of how they ought to relate to the state? Yes.
Dr. Gaultier, I'm sorry, I've got to jump in, because we've gone over time a little bit.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
And so on. So that's okay, but that was our last question? So were you good on that response? So thank you very much for being here. We truly appreciate, and you're right, we didn't get a chance to get the closing remarks, but I'm glad you included those closing remarks in your opening remarks. So we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the time. And let me say that no matter what you decide, I will be a fan of this group for a long time.
We appreciate that, Dr. Gaultier.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and just again for one final time, Dr. Gaultier? She has your phone, so you'll want to get that back. Thank you. And thank you again, just one final time, to all of the applicants who put their hats into the ring and have gone through this process. You can exhale now, because that public piece of that is gone for you, and now it's time for the board to have some conversations. But let's, why don't we have some public comment? I think we do have some on this, so let's hear from public comment before we bring it back to the, bring it to the board table.
Valerie Fianaca.
I'm sorry, you want, okay, hang on. Shall we take a quick break now and then? You know, why don't we do that? And then that way, we don't have public comment, and then we take a break. That way, it's still a part of that conversation. Ms. Fianaca, I'm sorry, but you'll be first. Okay, let's take a 10 minutes, and then we'll come back, everybody. Thank you. All right, everybody, the break is over. We're going to go ahead and get started. And just before we go, Ms. Fianaca, I just want to talk a little bit about how the process will work. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. This is how the process, this is how our process will work, very similar to what we did last time. We're going to hear from our public commenters. And thank you for those who've stayed this whole time and listened and all of that. So we're looking forward to your comments. Thank you for those who listened to our public commenters. Then we'll bring it back here to the board, have some discussion, sort of like we did last time, everyone kind of sharing where they are. And hopefully, then we'll all have, we'll all share kind of what our thinking is and so on. Doesn't necessarily have to say exactly where you're going to land, but just sharing ideas from each other. And again, we want to continue to talk more about this is why someone is of interest to you, as opposed to this is what I don't like about Angie. Because there's plenty of stuff, I mean, not, I don't mean me, but as a candidate, right? You know, we all have plenty of that. But just look at this, this is kind of what got my attention, if you would. I mean, you know, we can do that any way you want to, but we want to continue to make this something that's positive. And then I will ask, JJ turned out, turned over to us, each of us, a rating sheet, as she did before. And so we'll ask everyone to pick their top, let's say you pick, we'll just rate our top three. Rate our top three, turn those into JJ. Just much, we'll take a quick break, as JJ works with our general counsel, and compile and see where we are based upon number, your three points is your top, your top person will get three points. Your second person will get two points, and your third person will get one point. Okay? Again, very similar to what we did before. Bring those back, see where we land, and then we'll continue to work through this until we land on our applicant. Okay? Until we land on our applicant. And then, once we land on our applicant, of course, there would need to be a motion that that person is appointed to fill the position. And then should that motion be seconded? And then we approve it. Once we get down, when we get down to three, we can have a conversation, and just do a motion from there, if we choose to as a board. Then once we land on the appointee, what we will do is actually have, immediately, we will have a swearing-in of that appointee. There will be a ceremonial swearing-in, one family can come and so on, certainly. But there's a district business that's going on right now. but there's a district business that's going on right now. There are citizens in District C that don't have their full representation, and as soon as we've appointed someone, there's no reason to wait for that. So we'll do that, we'll do a swearing-in right then, and hopefully you've blocked till 4:00 PM, as asked, because we will then have a legal meeting, which is really a non-meeting, according to NRS something, 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 something. Yes, which is, that's why we have counsel, right? According to NRS something. Yeah, he knows who it is, and you don't have to tell him, because he was about to tell it, and we know he knows who it is. But we'll have a legal meeting, and we'll invite, we'll ask really the new appointees to fill in right away. We'll have a working meeting, a working session, because it's a non-meeting, because it's legal issues, and we'll have lunch as we consider that. And then again, at the very beginning of our meeting next Tuesday, which is when we will have our first opportunity to review the applicants from District D, right between now and then, trustee Thigpen will have given us a date for his resignation. Thank you for staying around to get through this process. We appreciate that. Then we'll, your first order of business, as we take a vote, we don't vote at non-meeting, so that will not happen, but your first order of business as an official trustee will be to help select your new colleague in District D. So right before we begin that, the meeting will start, but right before we begin the business of that will be the ceremonial, if we call swearing-in, one family can come and so on. We'll talk more about that with whomever it is that's selected, so. Just kind of wanted to run through that process. Everyone knows what to expect going forward. Again, certainly been in your place and understand how just normal information just helps a little bit along the way, so. Trustee Church?
Just clarify for me, if you would. So we narrow it down to three?
Yes, sir.
Then what happens? Public vote, or what?
Well, any vote we take, you know, will be public, as you know, right? From there, it can be a vote, it can be some, it just depends upon how our conversation goes. If we need to, everybody, put your, put your two, we'll follow and see what's the pleasure of the board. So that's not really for me to decide, that's for us to decide.
So not set in stone, got it?
Yeah, like, I mean, I'm the process piece, but then other than that, we move down this road as we think is best for the board, so. Okay? Everybody good with that? Was all set? Okay, so now, we'd love to hear our public comment. Again, thank you for your patience. Thank you for waiting. Ms. Fianaca, you know you're up first. Again, thank you very much. And you know the routine?
I do, thank you. I wanted to thank all the candidates who volunteered for this really, really tough job, and thank you all for serving. During our 622 board meeting, both Andrew Cottle and Kurt Thigpen both stated they would be abstaining from voting, yet Mr. Thigpen voted at the last meeting and is here today to vote. I'm confused, and I'm hoping you guys can clarify after I'm done speaking. I'd like to state also that my compadre, I say I should get off social media, that I should never be on social media, but I feel like that keeps me in touch with the community a bit and lets me know what parents are thinking and grandparents. Last week, the school district in this seat that we're filling was particularly alight with parents talking about their kids. And one person, one candidate amongst this group, reached out and said, "Anybody who wants to ask me questions, please do." He put himself out there on social media to engage in our neighborhood, and it was a robust conversation. I private messaged him, and he got back to me. He not only put himself out there, but invited people to question him, and I did so. I didn't feel he answered my questions thoroughly, but he tried. They were tough probing questions. It takes guts to put yourself out there to questioning. I will give him points for guts. And I really appreciated that he did that. None of the other candidates engaged. I don't know that we're all on the same social media. I can't say that, so I can't say that that's a bad thing or a good thing. But with the amount of unhappy parents, that man, Mr. Joe Rodriguez, stepped out there into the public arena, and I felt like that should be mentioned in this process. I thought that was really important, that he did that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca. Oh, I'm, you wanted to-
Did you want to clarify the why I'm voting?
Actually, I can, just from a clarification standpoint, because you guys, you know how careful we are, but from a clarification standpoint, trustee Cottle and trustee Thigpen refrained from voting on the process. They did not say that they would refrain from voting on the selection. In fact, part of trustee Thigpen delaying the actual date of his resignation was so that we would have six trustees to fill the position in District C. So they've refrained from voting on the process, not on that selection. They can't vote on their own. Right, let's be very clear about that. And neither trustee Cottle did, nor will trustee Thigpen, but there's that clarification. First of all, clarification was good. Thank you.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Mr. Duran, welcome. You've been here before, so you know the routine as well, sir.
Okay, this is probably my last and first public comment for today. So I want to say, I want to, I did send an email about 101 Technology School. I know that some middle school have 101 device school, but I think, let me be clear, 101 device school is very important. And sure, students should learn about technology, it's very important, because the workforce is changing. And I want my sister to step up when I grow up, be prepared for the real war. That's for all, so you got my email?
Mr. Duran, I'm sorry, that should be for a general public comment. The public comments now should be about the selection process only.
Oh, okay, because I had to leave early.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then you would just email us then, sir, but we need to stay true to the agenda. And so any public comment you make now, sir, should be about the selection process.
Okay, so for the selection process for trustee C-
For District C, yes, sir.
Yes. So for the District C, I do support her as a trustee for C, because he found out the resume. About, she worked at a retail store for over, almost 10 years. And she worked at the city of Reno, and the Washoe County Community Research, so she, her manager, or management analysis, so that's give her experience, what the data looked like. It's very important to have, take a, take a, look like what this student looked like, but the performance looked like, all kind of stuff. Second of all, I saw the public comment on, from a trustee C. I think she's the best candidate out there, but I do live on District A, which is Jeff Church District. So I, so don't take it from me, so listen from a trustee C, not me, but I do support her.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, same thing. Welcome, sir. You know the routine?
Thank you. My name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher, and I have two kids left in the district. Congratulations to the six candidates. I've been intimately involved with this board for 12 years. Board members, please remember, you are replacing someone the voters of District C voted for, Andrew Cottle. And Andrew is a conservative Republican. If your goal is to keep the community divided and ignore the people of District C, vote in a liberal Democrat. Using social media, I discovered two candidates who were somewhat problematic. At the last board meeting before you voted, I gave the board 18 posts of Verita, Facebook posts, that show her disdain for Republicans. This candidate is a college-educated adult, and if she does not realize how what she posts on Facebook may affect her future, how do you expect children as young as kindergarten to know what it's okay to share and what isn't with all these education vendors the district requires them to use? These education vendors know much more about our children than Facebook, Twitter, and Google will ever learn about us adults. Students share schoolwork, personal information, including their ideas, attitudes, and beliefs, with numerous education vendors. Almost everything these kids share with these education vendors will never be seen by their parents. In addition, many of these vendors create student profiles on our children.
Mr. Appolito, you know I'm going to ask you to stay on the agenda item, sir. If you would, I'd appreciate it.
Angie, I'm Parents also will never see the student profiles these vendors create. No one really knows how the data all these vendors secretly-
Mr. Appolito, I'm sorry, sir. You know the routine. I hate that we do this, because we don't really have to, but I just need you to stay on the agenda item.
Angie, I've been doing this for 12 years, and I've, no one really knows how all-
Mr. Appolito, I'm sorry, sir.
Angie, if you would let me finish, I would get to it. It's the next sentence.
Okay, please, go right ahead, then.
Thank you, Angie. I wouldn't do that to you, by the way. No one really knows how the data all these vendors secretly collects on students, and the profiles they create may affect the future of our children. Another candidate that should not be replacing a conservative Republican is Candy Lorenzo. Here are a couple examples of her Twitter posts, and a video that she posted about systemic racism and white supremacy. Even though you and I may agree with Ms. Lorenzo, the board must recognize that this is in direct opposition to what many parents teach their kids. It's time for everyone to come together and focus on improving education by focusing on the basics, reading, writing, verbal communication, math, science, and history, and possibly bringing back cursive and keyboarding. You can find over 1,200 of us on our private Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children.
Thank you for bringing that back around, Mr. Appolito.
I don't appreciate being interrupted, Angie. You know I'm bringing it back around. I always do.
JJ, who's next?
Shannon Coley.
Welcome, Ms. Coley.
Thank you. The reason that 99% of the people have been showing up to the school board meetings for the past month, past four months, have been to protest social justice curriculum. I believe the community survey was 84% against it. Parents do not agree that fighting racism with racism will bring about racial harmony. They do not want CRT being taught to their children or grandchildren. They do not want whatever you label, want to label benchmark curriculum. We are absolutely all for teaching the true complicated history of the United States, just like it says in NRS.
Ms. Coley, I'm sorry, would you bring it?
Yep, yep.
If I need you to get there rather quickly, because I just want to be consistent to the rules that we have. If you would do that, I'd really appreciate it.
Just like NRS 261 asks, it does not say the words "social justice" once. It doesn't. NRS 261 says-
Ms. Coley, you have to stay on the agenda item now.
It is.
If you can get to that, to the agenda item, I would appreciate it.
With that said, this community deserves a new board member who is open to compromise and does not pit us against each other. One candidate, Verita Black Prothro, has very divisive social media posts, one where she references a black U.S. senator as Uncle Tim. She also takes a shot at the police, saying, "We are not asking you to shoot them like you shoot us. We are asking you not to shoot us like you don't shoot them." Us and them. Do you think that is going to unify this community? I believe, I also believe that Ms. Prothro is a diversity consultant that advocates for critical race theory. Another candidate, Candy Lorenzo, posted a video on her Twitter account which specifically endorses critical race theory. This is the sole reason I have been showing up for months, to stop this massive and dangerous lie. The CRT lie is why this country is divided even further. CRT is the reason every school board across this country is filled with protesting parents. This is the reason people will not put their children back in public schools. Both of these candidates appear to endorse CRT, which you say is not and will not be taught in Washoe County schools. So my question to this board is, do you actually believe that the same constituents that voted for Andrew Cottle would approve of either of these candidates? I believe that if you vote for either of these candidates, the entire community will know that you have not listened to one word that we have been saying, and you are against any sort of compromise. These women do not represent the constituents that voted for Andrew Cottle. Please vote accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Coley.
Chris McAvoy.
Welcome, Ms. McAvoy.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Christine McAvoy, and I want to thank the board for listening and all the candidates here. I guess my biggest concern was with trustee Minato, when she's stating that you're required by law to teach social justice. And I'm just, I'd love for the school district's legal counsel to speak to this interpretation. I did go to law school. I graduated. I practiced in New York. I practiced in Colorado. I read 261, and I also read, you know, statutes that were relevant to the board, and I didn't see anything where there was any mandate to teach social justice, and I think that's extremely important, because every candidate that addressed this issue is addressing it as if that's the mandate of the legislature. I don't see that anywhere in any of the wording of the legislature, so I really would appreciate counsel speaking to that. The statute is just speaking to teaching more comprehensive multicultural history, which I think we all agree with. I think it's great to teach, you know, that represents any children in the school. If we can add more history, good, bad, ugly, that's irrelevant, but not to teach, you know, one skin color is bad, one skin color is oppressed, because then that is going to get us into legal problems. That's when we're going to be dealing with the Civil Rights Act. Nevada has numerous statutes. The federal government has numerous statutes. There's case law. There's so much. If we go down that social justice curriculum path, it's really going to lead us into trouble. And I think it's an important thing that we should be looking at before we're painting the whole brush of the applicants and how they're addressing their questions, is whether or not the legislature mandates teaching social justice. I do not see any evidence that that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAvoy. I will give a clarification. It's, the curriculum details do not come from the Nevada State Legislature. They come from the Nevada Department of Education.
Can I say one thing?
No, I just want to add in that clarification.
Well, Minato was saying that you were-
I'm sorry. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. McAvoy. I just wanted to give that clarification.
Okay, I'm clarifying.
Okay.
Chip Evans.
Welcome, Mr. Evans. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, well, good afternoon. My name is Chip Evans. I'm the co-founder and one of the leadership team members of Indivisible Northern Nevada, and I believe we sent you a letter in support of Verita Black Prothro to be your new addition to the board. We are stocked, chock-full of educators, and they felt this was a really important message to get to you, and so hopefully you've had a chance to review the letter. I want to thank each of you, because it's been a tough job for the administration, for you as a board, for our faculty members, and, you know, to, many of you didn't buy into this particular environment by your volunteering to participate in government here, but here we are, and I appreciate you doing your best. I want to say three things about Verita that were not necessarily clear in the letter that was sent. One is that she's whip-smart. She studies. She's got a particular gift for making the complex a lot simpler to understand. She connects dots. She's been very useful in a lot of conversations I've been a part of. One of the things you'll know from her background is that she has experience listening to all sides. It's in fact why she was hired to be a community relations representative for Republican politicians, because she listens. She comes back. She accounts well. She's entitled to her opinion at the end of the day, having to listen to everybody, as are you, as is everybody in this room, and we can all respect that, and she does. I know one of her primary objectives in life is to simply seek the truth. She, I had a radio program with her for a number of years, and her research on historical facts and processes that led up to what we were facing at the time was always first-rate. She doesn't, she's not full of jingoism. She does not live a bumper sticker life. She does not allow little flashpoints to become the issue. It's the truth of things, and she seeks it out, and she changes her mind when she finds the truth is different than she thought. And the last thing you need to know is, once upon a time, I stumbled into an event where Verita was the guest. I think it was a birthday. And all of her childhood friends were around, talking about Verita when she was a child. And they had three words that they said they always heard from her. "That's not fair." She has a sense of fairness that's innate. It's something she seeks for everybody, not only on behalf of herself. And I think those are all qualities that we would all be glad to be associated with, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Those are all the cards I have. The board received emails from Eric Curtis, Sean McCaffrey, Robert Chisel, Maria Flores, Candelaria Alvarez, Robin Noble- Hervey, Naomi Martinez, Gregory Reed, Marika Moore, and John Winters.
Thank you, JJ. Those, by the way, were the emails that were sent to public comment. If emails were sent to Board members, they were just Board member emails, but those are the ones who were sent to public comment, and they will be a part of the official record for the meeting. Okay? Thank you, everybody. Okay, let's bring it back here to the Board for discussion, for deliberation, before we all fill in our sheets and rank our top three candidates. I'm going to open it up for conversation, consideration, all of the above. Trustee Church, you see your lights first.
I was hoping somebody else would go first.
Yeah, no, it's a tough one. It's okay.
And I don't know how long I should talk for, but as I listened to the candidates and as I thought about what was appropriate, number one, I strongly encourage any and all of the candidates to run in 2022. So I remind you, that election's coming up, 2022. I also, you didn't mention this, but I also was in the hot seat applying, and I wasn't selected. You forgot. That's okay. And I wasn't selected, but at the time, I was a candidate, so I certainly understand that. But when I sat in that room, and then we must have had 20 or more candidates, I saw people I'd never seen before, and some of them had good backgrounds, but I was like, "Where did they come from?" And as soon as they were not selected, they disappeared. And to me, I'm thinking, you know, I want somebody that's involved. I don't want somebody that just shows up, applies, and thinks they're great, and then goes away, you know, afterwards when they're not selected. And I also wanted somebody that had the District C knowledge, the time commitment, and was not politically influenced. So those were thoughts that I had in my mind, and I'm just going to go through real briefly some of my notes, and I'll just start in the order we did it. I thought Mr. Rodriguez, everybody brought a lot to the table, but Mr. Rodriguez, I thought he was qualified. I thought that he would be a team player, wouldn't be influenced, but I found his answers very generic. Ms. Black Prothro, there's some issues as far as her divisiveness. I thought her PR background would be excellent for the Board, and her education is excellent, but I do have some concerns, again, about some of what she called, quote, "her strong views." Then we come to Sean McCaffrey, if I'm pronouncing that right, and holy smokes, I mean, I just was so impressed that his education, his master's degree, his work with the Educational Alliance, so exactly what I was talking about, involved in the school district already. Three hours, met with Mr. Cottrell. Nobody else mentioned that. He just, he knew more than I did. He knew how many principals there were in District C. He stated that he wanted education to be not divisive. He knew that we had a task force, looking at whatever we want to call it, social justice or whatever. And then he said he watched not only many of the Board meetings, but he watched the policy meetings. He's a strong supporter of field trips, which I am. He used the term involving the stakeholders. He indicated he had the time commitment, and so just my gut was like, wow, this guy's ready to just jump in and do it. Moving on to Ms. Lorenzo, again, highly qualified, very impressive, like so many of the other candidates. The Spanish-speaking, I am a... You hablo español también, my males. But, yeah, definitely a welcome diversity person for the Board. The background in HR would be excellent for the Board. I did find some of the answers to be rather generic, not specific. Mr. Kendall, I found the answers to be a little bit generic, and I think his union representation would be potentially a conflict with his prior employment with the Board. And then also, Mr. Galtney, again, an excellent candidate. Just, to me, between Sean McCaffrey and Mr. Galtney, to me, it's a no-brainer, but PhD in education, almost more than that, masters in economics, which is, you know, we're dealing with that right now. He understands funding, and kind of, if I might do a little humor, we might want to look at him for the Boards so that he doesn't put in for superintendent. His background with being president of two different junior colleges, he reached out to EDON. He's just so well-spoken. He mentioned, quote, "Stay out of politics." He served on the Spanish Springs Advisory Board, District C, so he, again, he's involved in the district. Now, that was for the county, not the school district, but, you know, that he's involved in the district. So to me, just Mr. Galtney's background, education, he was incredibly well-spoken, and then Sean's background and what he had put into learning about this, those represent my opinions, and I sure appreciate being the first to go, but thank you.
Well, thank you for being the first to go, and I apologize. I forgot you were involved at Pine Middle School, so you've been down the road as well, so thank you. Please accept my apology for that. Okay, I see. Thank you, trustee Church. Trustee, take pin.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, I've just been blown away by the interviews, honestly. I mean, everyone is highly qualified and very dedicated to their community. The folks that stood out for me the most, obviously, Dr. Galtney. I mean, it's hard to argue with that level of experience, and his answers are so eloquent and intelligent, and I very much appreciated them. And I think he would be a very knowledgeable, steady hand for the Board in this interim time for filling this seat. Was very inspired by Mr. Kendall's service as well to the district. I do kind of agree with trustee Church, the role he held as past union president of the school police could potentially, you know, offer up a conflict, especially as negotiations go with the union. I really liked Ms. Lorenzo. She was very eloquent. I really could feel her passion for community and service. I'm very much a fan of servant leadership. I think that she could bridge kind of a gap that we have on the Board between us and the Latinx community, as I mentioned at our last meeting. We often talk about how it's hard to reach those communities and find good ways of doing that, as we have to make tough decisions. Ms. Black Prothro, I liked her story. I love her background, and I can kind of understand it a lot, having grown up in the South. I understand a lot of the dynamics that she describes, and I like her business background as well, and, yeah. And Mr. Rodriguez, I think, I think he is, he's pretty high up on my list. He, I'm particularly thinking about how hard of a job that this is, being a trustee, in the time that we are in and the decisions that you all are going to have to make, because we're not out of the woods yet in regards to the pandemic. I could see Mr. Rodriguez being very beneficial to the Board, because he knows how to deal with high-stress situations with his role with the fire department and the state and all of that, and dealing with multiple agencies. Just reading about him and hearing from him today was very inspiring, so that's kind of my initial feelings.
Thank you, trustee Bigpen. Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, thank you. And it's been said many times, but I don't think we can say it enough. Thank you for stepping up and caring enough to put yourself out there and share your heartfelt ideas and taking some risks in some of the things you say, and that's a beautiful thing, because this is risky business, and it's important business. So very quickly, I too am going to concentrate on the positives, because I think that's the best way to do it, and thank you for that guidance, President Taylor. This is in no special order. This is just my packet, and so I'm starting with Ed, and I want to say, wow, thank you for your passionate and comforting way that you spoke about being a police officer in Washoe County School District. Thank you for working with our students, because I too agree with Ed that many times it's a police officer's face that our students see, and I've always felt that police officers are part of our faculty. They're part of our teaching faculty. They have so much to offer, aside from keeping our students and our staff and our hallways and our parking lots and anybody who comes to our school safe. It's an extremely important, and I think not often given the credit where the credit is due. The work with the union, I'll tell you, is, I believe, also extremely important and insightful. I'm not so sure that it would be an issue to be a trustee and have had been a former president serving. I certainly think it's something that would be very valuable to bring to the table. Again, going through Joseph Rodriguez, thank you very much for your service as a veteran and as someone who continues to serve our communities and our state. That is truly admirable. You put your life on the line, and I thank you for that. My son is a Marine, 20-year Marine who recently retired, and I totally have a great deal of respect for our military, anybody who serves the people of our nation, but in particular. And your service as a veteran is something, and your work now is truly something that could bring insight and, I think, some stability to our work. And I say stability, not that we're unstable, it's just that it's very dynamic, and it's, these are interesting times, and so thank you for what you're doing right now. Verita, your passion and the way you spoke about your service at the legislative and governmental level is something that I very much respect, because the little tiny bit of knowledge that I have, that is tough work. You are constantly battling the forces that have good ideas and are worried and scared and taxpayers, and that is very, very tough work, and that takes a very special kind of temperament and commitment to continue to do that, and so very much thank you for that. I liked your stories about the Republican Party collaboration, because truly, that is part of our work here, is that we have to really not even care what political leaning anybody has. We have to listen. Sometimes it's hard, but we have to listen and process what are they trying to tell us, our constituents, our students, our teachers? What do they want us to learn? Even when they're very angry, and sometimes they, you know, they'll use what I would call name-calling, you still must listen and respect the fact that they have something that they want to share, and that's not always easy work, and I'm certain that you've experienced that. Candy, thank you for your work. AYSO, go score. Boy, working with kiddos, there's the gift, right there, and I hope that you will never ever stop doing that, no matter what happens today or tomorrow or in the future. Please continue to be there for our kiddos and our families, and thank you for that service. I truly appreciate it, and I know that you would bring something very special to the table, and I don't say that lightly. Sean, thank you for all your work that you accomplished with Ed Alliance. I've had an opportunity to watch you, never worked directly with you, and your passion for bringing new ideas and bringing people together to make them happen, the fact that you recognize nobody does this alone is extremely important, and I want to thank you for that. And then John Galtney, Dr. Galtney, he brings such a deep and broad experience that, again, for me, it's very hard to, I have to constantly think, because I've known Dr. Galtney for many, many, many years, and I've seen his work. I've seen his strengths. I've seen his weaknesses. I've seen his successes, and I've seen his failures. And the way that he professionally and eloquently is able to make sense of the now what, and how do we turn something around to make it be what we initially wanted it to be, that's an art, and that's a skill, and he truly possesses it. His understanding of policy and working at a 30,000-foot view is extremely valuable and something that takes years and years to hone, and he has that. So I guess in closing, what I really want to say is, I want to kind of mirror what my colleague trustee Church had to say, is please continue, no matter what happens today and tomorrow, please continue with your passion to want to help our students, our employees, and our communities, because it takes all of us to do good work. So get involved on a committee of Washoe County School District, whatever you can, whatever little thing you can, all the way to being the trustee, which is truly an honor. I'm always, I could cry, just like Ed did, about the honor and the privilege that it is to be able to serve at this level, and it's also very hard. And so whatever happens, good luck, and I appreciate each and every one of you, our public commenters too. Thank you. We need you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. I saw you leaning in. Clerk Minato?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to thank everybody for coming out, because I know this isn't easy at all, but I'm just going to focus on the three people I really stood up out in my mind. I think the person that best represents Mr. Cottell's viewpoints is Sean McCaffrey, and I think, I can't help but wonder, you know, he was, Andrew was voted there, so we need to stay with his ideals to help keep the balance. And then I am, at every turn, Mr. Rodriguez, I just am more impressed every time I hear him speak. He, I just think he'd be a real team player. And then I love the passion of Mr. Kendall, because I think everybody on this Board gets that passion of, and so there it is.
Thank you, Clerk Minato. I'm going to go over to you, trustee Calvert.
I'd just like to say and thank each and every one of you for coming out. I know that this is really hard, and I have met with a few, a couple of you, and it's just really, for me, it's really a hard decision to make, but I really, Mr. Kendall, I really appreciate your passion that you have for our students. I really, that's me. That's just where my heart is at, is with our students and making sure that they are getting the education that they need and that they have people in the school that they can talk to when they have problems, when they have issues. And Verita, I have met with you as well, and I appreciate your stories, because I know that it is hard a lot of times for our Afro-American students, our mixed students. My son is mixed as well, and it wasn't until years later, after he was out of school, that he was telling me with his problems and his struggles, that he had been a child in school. So I totally can relate to that, and I hope that that's something that we can overcome within our community and within our school district. Mr. Rodriguez, I mean, I'm speechless with you. You just, I don't know. I don't even know what to say. I really have enjoyed each and every time that you have come here to speak. I mean, I've learned a lot from you. I believe that you do have a lot that you could bring to the table should you be selected as a candidate, and I really appreciate you taking time out of your day to be here. Ms. Lorenzo, thank you for being here. I appreciate all that you have done as well, and with our children and doing all the things that you do. Very much appreciated, and best wishes to you. And you have a full plate as well. You have a lot going on in our community, and I think that's something, especially in the Hispanic community, that's really needed and a voice that's needed, not only in the school district, but within our community, that that voice is heard. So thank you for all that you do. I really do appreciate that. And Mr. Galtney, and I know I probably butchered your name, but I really liked a lot of things that you said. I believe that you have a lot of great ideas that we could bring, and we do need to think about, as our students are in school, what is that afterlife like? What are we preparing them for? So I do believe that you have a lot of great ideas that could help us move forward in doing that. doing that and good luck to you as well. Mr. McCaffrey, we have met as well and I just wanted to say that you have a big passion for your community and for the school district and I believe that you as well have a lot of great ideas that we could use to move the district forward and best wishes to you as well. And thank you all, each and every one of you. I know this has been a very hard process, it's been very tough and nerve-wracking, but I appreciate each and every one of you and whether you win or not, I hope that you will continue your dedication to the school district in doing whatever it is that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Calvert. And my comments, right before we vote, unless someone has something, has other comments they'd like to make, is there were, oh wait, you know, let me go back. There were three people that I interrupted during your public comments and I think it's really important for me to say this. I don't mind public comments. It's your right to come. I don't mind it, I will stay all day. I really, I truly, truly will, but my job as the manager of the meeting is to make sure that we follow the rules. And as we talk about working together, I like to work together on that. Let's just follow the rules and I think we can get there. And then public, we can be here all day, we've proven it, we'll be here the 1:00, 2:00 in the morning if that's what it takes. It's okay for that. It's okay for that, but I like to work together on, hey, here are the rules that we have and let's work together and just adhering to those. And I do the really, I don't do a perfect job of it, I'll be the first to admit it, but I certainly try to do the best job I can to be consistent in that. And so, if we can work together with that, as we have all the public comment we need on everything that's important to share, I would just appreciate that. It's important for me to say that for those. And I will say to Ms. McAvoy, we got your point, we heard you. That's why I didn't say come back, no, we don't go back, but we got you, I heard you. I heard you, certainly did. Difficult decisions. I mean, I thank all of you a lot and so I don't need to repeat that and our colleagues have as well and I appreciate really all of those heartfelt words of appreciation for just going through the process. It is not easy. This is a really difficult decision. I think we have outstanding applicants that are before us. Perfect applicants, nope, but certainly outstanding applicants because none of us are perfect board members either, right? So it makes it a really difficult decision. I think that every one of the six finalists that we have and probably every one of the 27 who applied initially could bring something to the board that we don't have. And then our job, of course, is to make the difficult decision on what that additional thing might be that can make us better in the best possible way. There are some things in particular, a lot of things I think all of us were looking for as we go through this. I tried to quantify some things that I was looking for that would help stand out to me. This isn't exclusively, but these are the things that I can land on the best. I think it's important to, some leadership, as many of us have said, we're a young board, so the more leadership that we have to help us as we have the challenge of leading the district, I think it's something I was really looking for. Ability to listen, okay, willingness to listen and I guess I should say willingness to listen and the ability to recognize that we represent an entire community. And so, being willing to listen and hear from an entire community, it's difficult. All of our districts are very diverse. Even as we talk about District C, we have Spanish Springs, which is very different than the North Valleys. Two very different aspects of my district like that too. I have the McQueen area, I have the Hook High School area, very different. And the challenge is how do we listen to all of that? But as a board, it goes even more, further than that, we have the whole dang city, whole dang county, right? From Incline to Gerlach and everything in between. And so, really, so the ability to work as best we can, to at least listen, right, to at least listen and show that some of that listening influences decisions. Certainly, I mean, those of you who, many of you have mentioned, you've been coming to the board meetings and so on and, you know, we need to work better as a team. So someone, I'm looking, hey, who can help, who can help bring us together and not be perfect, who can help, who can be a part of bringing, not some, because we work on that all the time, but who can, who wants to be a part of that, of bringing folks together to work for, not because we all agree, that doesn't make us the best team, but who's willing to jump into that? And then something I think is really important is who demonstrates service before self. We all, we're all human, we all have ideas, we all have opinions, we all have experiences, we all have perspectives, we have, we all hear things differently through our own lens, through our own filter, not because we're anything other than human, but service before self. Because one thing you'll learn in this role is that the amount of time and attention you put on service is going to far exceed the amount of time and attention you put on yourself if you're doing this thing right. So, that being said, I'm going to say a little something about each of the candidates in the order that you appeared before us. Mr. Rodriguez, your public service, the roles that you've played have been really impressive and many of the board members have talked about, just the way that you've continued to represent yourself, Hispanic voice, Latino voice, so a voice from Latinx community is one that we don't have on the board, okay? That'd be helpful as well. Ms. Prothero, you know, I've known you and I've said that when we first started this thing, your perspective as a parent is something that we also don't have on the board. I think what spoke highly is the support that, in an email we got from a former United States senator, that's pretty big deal, who also, who was a Republican senator, who was in Republican leadership. I mean, that got my attention as well. Mr. McCaffrey, you know, I've known you as well, where are they, you are? I've known you as well, it'd be hard-pressed to miss the passion that you wear on your sleeve for what it is that you do and I certainly appreciate the knowledge, partially because you worked in the district, because that's part of who you are, that's not a bad thing, right? The knowledge that you brought to this process and the extra things you did to get ready for this process. Ms. Lorenzo, you serve the community now, right? This is part of what you've done, you're a parent, that's a different lens as well, you're a member of the Latinx community, that's a different lens as well. And I will say, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with someone speaking against any kind of supremacy. All supremacy is bad, right? So that in and of itself doesn't bother me. And speaking for inclusion without division, right? And you spoke about without division, that personally stands, but that doesn't bother me. I think we should all speak out against anything that excludes people and that puts one group of people above another group of people. I think we should all, and I think that as a board we do. Mr. Kendall, I mean, your service to this district, where are you? Oh, I can't see you, you're behind there. Okay, there you go, I see your head, I got you, okay. I mean, you're tied to the schools in North Valleys in particular, those that you serve, the students, the families, certainly, certainly came across. And you put your time in, you've retired, you don't have to do this. So it's something obviously that it is that you want to do. And Dr. Gaultney, out there, okay, Dr. Gaultney, certainly it's hard-pressed to find somebody with the kind of experience that you have, just a solid steady hand, I think you said that, trustee Thigpen as well. So this is a very difficult decision for me because everybody brings something that can help make us better, right? That can help make us better. So, those are my comments. Those are my comments. So unless there are other comments any board members would like to share, then why don't we, again, we have the sheet before us. Rate your top three. Remember, three is your highest, two is your number two pick and then one is your number one pick. We'll take a brief recess and ask our council here, along with JJ, to put them together, add them up. We'll come back and then decide as a board what our next step should be from there. Okay? All right, everybody, thank you. Well, let's go ahead and get started. Okay, everybody is back and just as a reminder, JJ's going to go through each of the trustees with the votes because all of that is public record. And then from there, we will take a look at where the line is withdrawn and then what's the pleasure of the board? Okay? JJ?
Trustee Church, Sean McCaffrey, three. John Gaultney, two. Joe Rodriguez, one. Trustee Minetto, Sean McCaffrey, three. Ed Kendall, two. Joe Rodriguez, one. President Taylor, Joe Rodriguez, three. John Gaultney, two. Verita Black Prothero, one. Trustee Nicolet, John Gaultney, three. Sean McCaffrey, one, two. Candy Lorenzo, one. Trustee Calvert, Joe Rodriguez, three. Verita Black Prothero, two. Ed Kendall, one. Trustee Thigpen, John Gaultney, three. Joe Rodriguez, two. John Gaultney received 10 points. Joe Rodriguez received 10 points. Sean McCaffrey received eight points. Ed Kendall received three points. Verita Black Prothero received three points. Candy Lorenzo received two points.
Okay, so it looks like, just as a little, hopefully everyone kind of took down the order of that. Looked like, much like we had last time, there's a bit of a break, of a quote-unquote "natural" break, if you will, with Mr. Gaultney and Dr. Gaultney, excuse me, sir, Dr. Gaultney, Mr. Rodriguez, both had 10. Mr. McCaffrey had eight. Mr. Kendall and Ms. Black Prothero each had three and Ms. Lorenzo had two. So, bit of a break, but two had 10, one had eight. So what's the pleasure of the board? We have two with 10, one with eight and then, and we can do, there are a couple of things that we can do. We can just go straight to a motion, we can go to another vote and say pick two or pick one, pull all that together, everything we'd like to do. So I see your light on first, trustee Thigpen, and then we go to you, trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it would be the most sense, since we have an even break at two candidates, that we move forward with those two and do one more vote to pick one person.
Okay, that's your recommendation? Let's have some other, unless you want to make that in form of, you can, but we're going to have some discussion.
Yeah, I'm happy that I motioned to do that.
Okay, there's a motion that we go forward and do another round of votes with Dr. Gaultney and Mr. Rodriguez. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second to that motion? Okay, now we'll have discussion on that. Thank you so much. You can turn your light off as you're done. Discussion, your light was already on, trustee Church.
Just because Sean was so close, 10, 10 and eight, and that leaves six, seven, eight votes from the others, I think it'd be better to have three, narrow it down to the three candidates instead of two.
Okay, thank you, trustee Church. Other discussion? Okay, seeing no other discussion, there is a motion on the floor and the motion is to go forward with Dr. Gaultney. I'm sure I'm probably messing up that name, sir, I'm sorry. Mr. Rodriguez, that one I know I got right and then do another round of votes from there, that's the motion on the floor. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Okay, the motion carries, let the record show, it is six to one. So JJ, if you would, and that's what we'll do, we'll go, we want to do, again, a big sign of appreciation to Mr. McCaffrey, Mr. Kendall, Ms. Black Prothero and Ms. Lorenzo. Thank you, thank you again. Please stay involved, their committee, I think their committee position's open right now. And again, this position is open for election in November 2022 and I'm sure the application deadline is somewhere in March, so we, please stay involved. Even if you feel like, hey, I don't want to run, we still need you, we need your voice, we need your perspectives, it just will make us better as a board. So again, as a matter of fact, let's give them a round, if we can, if we can. Thank you.
And we need bus drivers and substitutes and...
Well, yeah, they have jobs, they have jobs.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Substitutes, so you may be available for substituting, we certainly would like that as well, so. We're getting, so now we're going to pick one. To pick, oh no, let's do a two and a one, how about that? We'll do a two and a one. Two is your top choice, the number two is your top choice. Okay, it seemed like I had, saw more support for that, so two is your top choice, your second choice is a one. Put your name, and please put your name on the sheet. Yes, please put your name on the sheet. That's simple, easy, so I don't think we need a recess for, maybe just, you know, talk amongst yourselves. And then just as a reminder, to whomever the successful applicant is, I shouldn't say the selected applicant is because just by being in the finalist, the super finalist is certainly successful, we will swear you in right away so that you can take office right away as we begin to prepare for what's upcoming. As we have another selection to make. Okay, I think we're ready, so whenever you are, JJ, if you wouldn't mind reading them again for the record?
Yep. Trustee Church, John Gaultney, two. Joe Rodriguez, one. Trustee Minetto, John Gaultney, one. Joe Rodriguez, two. President Taylor, John Gaultney, one. Joe Rodriguez, two. Trustee Nicolet, John Gaultney, two. Joe Rodriguez, one. Trustee Calvert, Jack, trustee Calvert, John Gaultney, one. Joe Rodriguez, two. Trustee Thigpen, John Gaultney, one. Joe Rodriguez, two. Totals are Joe Rodriguez, 10. John Gaultney, eight.
Thank you very much. That being the case on the vote, they could not have been closer. Actually, just one vote, one way or the other, one vote. So now that those numbers are in, I will entertain, if it is the pleasure of the board, I will entertain a motion from the board. Trustee Thigpen?
As my last motion is trustee. Is there a recommended thing that's already typed up for me to read?
It's on the agenda.
I'm a mess, guys, just excuse me. Okay. Pursuant to Nevada revised statute NRS 386.270, the Board of Trustees, I motion that the Board of Trustees appoints Joe Rodriguez to fill the vacancy on the Board of Trustees in District C to serve in the position until January 2nd, 2023 at midnight.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor by trustee Thigpen, seconded by trustee Calvert. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries, let the record show, it is six to zero. Mr. Rodriguez, congratulations, sir. And again, just another huge congratulations and appreciation for all of you who are here. Mr. Rodriguez, the media's probably here, so you're going to be a star for a while, but if you would, I'm going to come over and we can administer the oath of office and we can get you in position, right, right away and then, I hope you don't have plans because we have a meeting. When we do, however, when you do the, when we do the ceremonial, then whomever you select will be there with you, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? So let's just repeat after me and say aye, state your name.
Aye, Joe Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the Constitution and the government of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance.
Any ordinance.
Resolution or law.
Resolution or law.
Of any state.
Of any state.
Notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Of school trustee.
Of school trustee.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Again, congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome very much. It is great to have you here and we're going to have you...
Either seat.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, either way, but why don't we, why don't we close, why don't we finish, we need to have you sit, so since that's close, we'll have you take the position right now. I know, you're like, right now, I know, sorry. Right here. Right here, okay, because we do have a couple more items on the agenda that we want to, that we want to take care of. Actually, just one, and that is our call for public comment.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, you know the routine, sir?
My name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher. I have two kids left in the district. I'd like to talk for a moment about this article titled "School Counselor Arrested on Child Porn Charges After Cat Fishing Probe." This is a Washoe County School District Counselor, Ball Ismael, had unlimited access to reading and adding subjective information to students in Infinite Campus. Recall, Infinite Campus is the most massive database ever created on students in human history and anything entered in Infinite Campus is never deleted. We don't know the implications for these kids of having all this subjective, sensitive and incriminating data stored about them forever. As a school counselor, Ball Ismael had access to all the students' Infinite Campus counseling tabs. This is very important. Teachers, administrators and parents do not have access to that counseling tab. That tab has everything ever entered about students by other counselors, school psychologists, social workers and possibly others. I'm not saying this happened, but it is possible that Ball Ismael could have used Infinite Campus to identify underage victims at his school. Even if he didn't use Infinite Campus as a tool, this board needs to understand and publicly discuss the implications of Infinite Campus storing sensitive and incriminating student data forever. We at Protect Nevada Children have been requesting documentation showing all the data fields IC collects, stores and shares on all students in the district. So far, the district refuses to provide a list. Here's Littleton, Colorado's. Eighty-two pages, 2,000 data fields. Some individual data fields could have hundreds of entries. The most incriminating data is subjective, but it's still stored forever. If a parent wants to see what's stored in there, you have to make appointment with at least two different school officials. I've done this for all my kids. It takes a long time. We at Protect Nevada Children once again beg this board to finally have a public discussion about Infinite Campus. Open meeting law violation. People have been wanting me to file this for a while and I told them I would make my decision today. I'm not going to say it out loud. I've sat through meetings where President Taylor has allowed people who agree with her to drone on and on and on and not even close to the agenda item. As a matter of fact, there was one meeting where she let people talk twice about the same thing. At least I do it in two different meetings. There is a double standard, us versus them, and Angie Taylor is them. Voltaire, I don't agree with what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it.
Mr. Appolito, your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Shannon Coley.
Welcome, Ms. Coley.
Every time I've gotten up here to speak to you, I have only given direct examples from the benchmark social justice curriculum. Having reviewed these lessons every day for the past three months, I can tell you without a doubt that none of these lessons are amplifying or lifting up one minority voice. These lessons are not about presenting a non-white washed version of history, nor are they about having the tough conversations about race. They aren't. So what are they about? Every one of these lessons being taught to five to 10-year-olds is about blaming the privileged class, code word for white people, for every disparity that exists in the BIPOC or oppressed community. And yes, it does use both of those words, oppressed and privileged. The lessons never once discuss personal choices, responsibilities, cultural norms or attitudes or cause and effect. They simply imply that every problem that the BIPOC community is facing are directly attributed to systemic racism and the privileged class who make the rules that keep the BIPOC people poor and disadvantaged, which is simply not true. This idea of white supremacy or systemic racism is presented in each lesson, discussion and activity. What do you believe the desired outcome is in hammering this ideology over and over? Week after week, year after year, beginning in kindergarten until they are 18? The outcome is obvious to me and it is not racial harmony. It will create guilt, fear, resentment and anger. You are creating social justice warriors. Social justice warriors who are willing to tear down the most diverse and prosperous nation on the planet in the name of equity. Perhaps we should be giving students the tools they need to build a successful future for themselves, not give them tools to dismantle our nation. Again, these lessons are based in Marxist conflict theory. Whether you or your Equity and Diversity Department understand that. This is not hyperbole. It took a sociologist all of three minutes to go over this curriculum to say to me, this is Marxism. I gave no prompts, no biases. I want to know the truth. Marxist theory is the idea that society is inherently unfair and many aspects are determined strictly by the powerful in order to retain power. This idea is intended to divide a nation. It is revolutionary rhetoric. It is designed to inflame the have-nots or the oppressed to rebel against the haves or the privileged. This is the lessons actively being promoted, beginning in kindergarten. This is a social push for equity, not equality.
Thank you, Ms. Coley.
Those are all the cards I have. The board also received emails from Pablo Nava Duran and Lori Newman.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Okay, that's our last agenda item. Thank you very much. This, this special meeting is closed. Our next time we get together will be another special meeting. A week from today, 9:00 AM, that will be our first opportunity to publicly review the applicants to be appointed to the seat vacated by Trustee Thigpen. Trustee Thigpen, this is your last meeting. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your service here on the board, although it wasn't as long as any of us would have liked. We appreciate you hanging in there and pushing through through, we know your own medical issues, to be here and be a part of us moving forward. So thank you so much. All right, the meeting's adjourned.